Good evening ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to today's, the Tuesday, May 17th work session. If you will please stand with me, we'll have the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, if you'll be seated. We'll go ahead and get started, we've got a pretty extensive list today.
Mr. Chairman, can we get somebody to flip this TV around here? I thought we were in ostrich, I guess I could see someone behind me, but I'm not. There we go, thank you sir.
That's why we have Mr. Austin there.
Appreciate that, that's great.
I couldn't do that, I would have to get on his chair. Alright, we'll go ahead and get started with item number one, a presentation on the SSI Gateway Traffic Limitation Study by Kim Lee Horn and Associates. Mr. Mark Linters is here to present for us. You'll please come forward sir.
I think for the sake of the audience, there's some electronic files that you might want to project. The One PDF is the report. Cover looks like this. It's in that thumb drive. That's it, the SSI folder.
Is his mic hot?
Check, check, check. Yeah, it's there, Jack in here. It's just on the back, okay. Alright, well, I'll step you through the reports. So the, as I mentioned at the start of this meeting, this is a bit like a layer cake. So GWS did a study that really helped with the foundation of identifying options and also addressing options that you all had identified as potential solutions to the gateway intersection complex. And so, we built on that study by filling in sort of a front end gap. There was, I think in my mind, a gap in the understanding of the problem. And I mean, in a technical thorough way, understanding the crash problem, understanding the problem with weaving on the triangle. You know, there are things that drivers sense they can't always put words to, at least words that we can share, but we dug deeper into the problem to create a problem statement. So as I walk through the report, you'll see references to the GWS work and how we've built upon it. So in the, yeah, there you go. So flip, flip the page, I'll just give you a quick outline of the table of contents and so we can work through this. Study methodology. Go through the problem definition, which I think is a big part of doing an intersection control evaluation. Now this is three intersections essentially, it's a complex of intersections. And a thorough understanding of the problem statement gives you a stronger basis to make financial investment. Decisions have to be evidence based when it comes to spending upwards of millions of dollars for infrastructure improvements. The problem documentation, number four, the screening, original study alternatives, and we are again, are building on that foundation. And then we're using a Georgia DOT methodology for intersection control evaluation. It's a unified sort of systematic approach to, starting with a problem statement, working through different options and narrowing it to a short list. So we took an original list of seven or eight solutions and we explored them in a little more detail, certainly the ones that showed the most promise. And then summary of intersection control evaluation at the end. And I try to keep it as visual and graphical as possible, if you flip the page to introduction. Just section two, study methodology, detailed problem documentation. Oh, there we go. Yep, keep going, there you go. Detailed problem documentation, pre-screening alternatives documented in the previous study. So building on that work, and we essentially screened out options that do not solve the defined problem, which is something, the previous study did some work on that, but because we created a stronger foundation of problem understanding, we had a very good backdrop to say, these options won't work. They don't solve the core issue, the root issue. And what is the root issue? It's a triangle, but it operates like a rotary. I've been doing circular intersections for about 20 years, modern roundabouts is what we call them now, and we outmoded rotaries. Now this is a triangular rotary, but essentially it operates like a rotary. It has weaving sections. Each node where you interchange with other traffic, you have to reach another section, weave with other traffic entering that link, go to the next node and move on and either exit the system or go back around again. It's a one-way system. So they were outmoded because as congestion develops, they become unsafe. The traffic density tends to govern how safe they work because once you get congestion, the weaving action breaks down. And so does the capacity with it. And so you see the safety problems start to manifest, and this is a classic rotary in a triangular shape. So working through problem definition on section two, back up while one slide there. That little graphic that says ICE, that's Georgia DOT's intersection control evaluation. Now I didn't just plug numbers and run it through the system. You know, we did everything deliberately and consciously, but we wanted to follow GDOT's process because when I get to the end of this, one of the options you have is to pursue funding from a safety program perspective, GDOT's Highway Safety Improvement Program or congestion relief dollars. And there's some good reasons why federal funding and state funding would be to your advantage, and they relate to environmental. So let's go into problem documentation, we'll start to see the graphics develop here. So the first, the first slide is existing overview conditions. The dots represent crash clusters, and you can see the concentrations of crash clusters obviously as signal controlled intersection, in the midlock, in the links between the nodes, and at every confluence and entering and exit. And anyone who's driven it understands the problems with weaving. Because the legs between nodes are long, speeds develop, and traffic entering the system is not matching those speeds. So the weaving becomes, the driver entering is overtaken easily by the drivers circulating, and because speeds don't match easily, you get problems with side swipes. And the crash experience shows us that. In the lower left corner, K, A, B, C are federal definitions. K is fatality, A is incapacitating injury, B is minor injury, and C is minor injury, and D is property damage. So we see the majority of crashes are property damage, but we have some A, B, and C type crashes. They're infrequent, and they're not typically what you would expect except maybe at the signal crossing at Demeray and Sea Island. Keep going, flipping the page, so again, a little more microscopic. And the congestion patterns that we recorded from observations, you can go on Google Maps any day of the week and you can follow the congestion. It paints, it paints the map green and red and yellow as congestion develops. And we accumulated a series of days of congestion to observe where the queuing would develop and related that back to the problem of the rotary again. So you can see with weaving sections between nodes, you've got short merging distances, and when traffic density increases, you run into problems with safety. And that's essentially, so the congestion is driving some of the safety problems. Flip the page again to each of the triangles, and you can see the problem at Sea Island, Kingsway. It's essentially a yield stop condition. Drivers try to merge, there's a lot of side swipe crashes there. Speed coming around the curve, it's posted 35, but everyone knows you can drive faster. So that's essentially the theme of the existing problem, is it's congestion with a poor geometry causing crashes. So the root issue being congestion and crashes, you know, which one comes first? If we resolve some of the geometric deficiencies, then the congestion will go down and the safety will improve. And they are very closely related in this study. Flipping the page, some of the five-year crash history, there's a table on the top of page eight, top right corner, maybe not so easy to read. In five years, 239 crashes, 199 are property damage, 29 are minor injury, six and five are moderate and incapacitating injury type crashes. Some of them involve other vehicles, some of them involve roadway departures, single vehicle type crashes. But there's an overabundance of side swipes, rear ends, and looks like runoff the road type crashes, 26 or so. So then we go into, and I won't spend a whole lot of time on it, but crashes by time of day is one way that we correlate congestion with the crash pattern. When you see the frequency of crashes increase in overrepresented fashion compared to the traffic increase, we know there's a problem with the geometry. So looking at that and just moving right through to page 10, you see some of the screen captures, I have those videos if anyone cares to watch them. You can see the Google Maps, the red and the green. This is what develops through the morning peak hours and the noonday and afternoon. And I guess over the years, I've been visiting the island as a, on conferences for about 10 years now, and there's a large resident population and those essentially, you know, working in trades and service commercial and so on that commute every day. When you see this kind of congestion at 7:00 in the morning, 6:30 in the morning, these aren't the residents going to the beach. This is, these are workers, these are folks who own businesses and have to visit the island every day. So this effect of commuting, it's year-round now, it's not just a seasonal effect. So working through, let's jump to page 12. So building on the previous study, there were some counts taken with the GWS study from local count stations and then some additional tube counts that the county provided. And we supplemented that essentially to try and corroborate it. We collected independent data from this company called Streetlight, and they actually use automobile GPS. And we can instantaneously sample the traffic coming and going from the island. So essentially, we can get a very accurate picture of the origin destination pattern. And why is that important? Not just knowing where people are coming and going, but because one or more of the solutions involves changing the one-way circulation to two-way circulation, we have to know where people are coming from and going to in order to create our model to reassign that traffic. That is such a big part of this second wave of study that we had to get a very accurate picture of the traffic composition and traffic patterns. So this is just evidence of that, and comparing the two previous studies, table three, top right corner of page 12. Previous study, GWS, and our current counts, we're within 5, 5 or 10%. There's one outlier for westbound, and that could have been a daily effect. But we're really happy that, you know, the local count stations and the GPS data that comes from automobiles is very close for comparison. That gave us a foundation to go forward with the study. And then if you look at page 13, we reassigned the traffic and started looking at two-way flow. And so we can start to see the dominant patterns. And this is where some of the earlier solutions unraveled. This idea of a three roundabout complex, we took that off the table fairly early on. You had a draft progress report where we talked about that being a shortlist solution, but as this information emerged, it became evident that we don't need three roundabouts. In fact, the third roundabout at the top of the triangle by the causeway, that would actually create more delay than it would solve. The patterns are simply not in favor of that third roundabout. So to give you a bit of an idea of that, let's see if I can find those diagrams. Look at page 14 and 15. So patterns, and these are the different triangles and the Demeray Sea Island four lake intersection, and you can see by the color of the bands, the heavy movements. So at the causeway, Demeray and Kingsway, you can see the patterns on the lower left corner of the triangle, I guess the southeast side of the triangle, that's very low volumes, the top two diagrams. Then the next one down, that's right off the causeway. So much traffic is going to Demeray, you know, why would we push them through a roundabout when there's no opposing flow? There's hardly any traffic coming back towards the causeway, making a left turn, that would make a roundabout a suitable solution there. So I'm working through this fairly quickly, but my point is there's ample evidence from the counts we took that some of these solutions, we don't need to look at them in any more detail. So why don't we move to table seven, which is page 16. So these are, these are the original eight options, and I added some additional commentary on each of them. I'll admit that some of this is subjective, I use engineering judgment, and it's somewhat qualitative in the assessment, but the numbers in terms of costs, in terms of crash reduction, we think there's a fair bit of support. So as you look down the far right-hand side, it says summary recommendation, reject or advance. We didn't originally have the flyover option on the table. We only had triple roundabouts, number three, a single roundabout at Demeray Sea Island, number four, traditional intersections, which is essentially a signal control at Demeray and Sea Island. And that was it, we took the three options. But as we looked at those options in more detail, the triple roundabout essentially fell off the table. We didn't need three roundabouts, and number five is essentially one of the three roundabouts. So number three fell off the table. The consolidated roundabout, sorry, number four, the consolidated roundabout is one large single roundabout at Demeray and Sea Island. And stop control or yield or no control at the top of the triangle. And you'll see some diagrams that echo these comments. So on the far right side, we have advance on the flyover, but I developed two new options. One was a signal underneath the flyover, and the other one's a roundabout underneath the flyover. And we'll show you the advantages and compare each one. We rejected additional lanes, we rejected the three roundabout option, we have just the one roundabout option to advance, and we had to prove its capacity. And then traditional signals, you know, we wanted to see whether its capacity could be proven to be helpful for the triangle. And the other one, number six, is a partial displaced left turn lane. Now it's a, if you're a bird flying over it, you'd hope you'd never have to drive it. But GDOT's built some of them, and they're actually not that bad. You know, geometrically, they look complicated, but they work, they're very effective. There's one in Snellville, and there's one up in Dawson County. And they carry huge traffic volumes.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
It's a displaced left turn, and I'll show you a diagram in a minute. We'll get visual here with the diagrams. So that was our, essentially our stage one screening. We said, let's take the original options, let's look at them in relation to the problem, let's look at them in relation to the traffic flow patterns we understand better now, and let's see which ones survive that screening. Then we take those into a little more detailed screening and capacity. And that's really where I spent the majority of my time looking at these options. So flip to page 17, and you start to see intersection control evaluation stage two. And these are the options at the top left corner of the page. One A and B are a flyover, one with a roundabout, or a flyover with a traffic signal. And it's also called a single point urban interchange. Engineers just love these crazy complicated names. But essentially, it's a flyover with a traffic signal underneath it. Then number four is the single roundabout at Demeray and Sea Island. Five is a traditional set of signals in the same place, and six is that partial displaced left turn. So as you look through the pages, and there are exhibits at the back of the report, figure 20 is the flyover with the roundabout underneath. It's not, it's a less complicated roundabout than the one down at the end of Demeray and Frederica. Less complicated, but it'll carry a little more traffic volume because it has bypass lanes. And it's obviously fewer pedestrians, so it's going to be higher capacity and speeds will be a little higher. So it's a little bigger circle as well. And as you go to the facing half of the page, figure 21 is a traffic signal underneath a flyover. It's fairly efficient in footprint. We think that we can develop a pretty efficient footprint, you know, within a lot of the right away being Glynn Counties, and even all the lands between the triangle intersections, that's also Glynn County ownership. So you're in a good position to use some of your own land. The only problem is it's very sensitive in terms of wetlands and ecology. And I'll go into that a little bit. So flip the page to 18, you get the single roundabout option. This is where I want to just highlight something that we found, that we're doing a little differently than the original study, and that's the yellow arrows. So in the original study, these options with the focus on Demeray and Sea Island, we're taking all of the causeway traffic. We decided to split it and let it go, let some of the traffic go where it goes today, towards Kingsway. So by taking out 300 or 400 up to 700 trips, it's traffic that doesn't have any control, it just goes down Kingsway and disappears out of the triangle. No weaving, no other traffic joining it. Just at the very bottom, where it says figure 22, just above that line, there's going to be a merge between the traffic coming from the north, down Kingsway, and the traffic coming off the causeway. But that merge will be sized and designed because traffic will be at similar speeds, it'll be a reasonable merge. It won't be a weaving merge that you're experiencing today on the triangle. So that makes that solution a lot easier to carry forward because there's, we save some capacity by splitting the causeway traffic. The traffic going towards the lighthouse area, the traffic going towards Sea Island and to the north. So that split is carried through in all the options. It was so attractive, it's a, let's just keep this theme going. Even the flyover options split the traffic that way. So moving through to, look at page 19, and you'll see the partial displaced left turn, it's also called a continuous flow intersection. And that's the one with the kind of unusual geometry. It's an aggregate intersection, essentially taking out the left turns that would go to Sea Island, and they cross over the westbound traffic before they get to the intersection at Sea Island and Demeray. So essentially, it's advancing the left turn movement. And while that looks complicated, they've been done very effectively. All over the US, you know, they're not numerous, but where they've been used, they've been used deliberately because they solved that heavy left turn problem. Obviously, there's a bite on the wetland areas, and so there's environmental impacts. And so I guess the culmination of this review of intersection capacities in section 5.5, overall delays, it's on the facing half of the page. We looked at AM and PM, we looked at total network travel time, and which options fare the best in terms of network travel time. And then you'll see on the right side of table 13, we rank them. So actually, number six, the partial displaced left turn, comes out number one in terms of system delay.
How's that? Is that overpass? How are you doing where you cross?
Okay, so that's number one and number one. Look at their number two and three. So the three options, the two or three options that are surfacing are number six, the displaced left turn, and the flyover option with either a roundabout or a signal. And in the end, the roundabout wins out because it's just more capacity in peak and off-peak periods, and it's better safety. It has a slightly bigger footprint, but it gives you a lot of benefits. Without a signal at Sea Island and Demeray, you have this 24-hour, not waiting for a light, no actuation required, it's just a calm, quiet, at-grade intersection that takes the flow underneath the bridge. So it's a very attractive solution from that point of view. The problem is the cost is very high. So let's flip over to, get into a bit of the environmental, the not-so-good news. Left side, property impact assessment. All the shaded areas is Glynn County land. So it doesn't mean it's easy to get because you have wetland issues, which is the facing half of the page. There's estuary wetlands, there's ecology. The top of that page, above those figures, there's a list of all these animals I've never seen, and some of them are obviously very sensitive, you know all about the turtles. There's an archaeological site at the top of the triangle along the waterfront, it's undeveloped. And if there's any encroachment on that, there has to be mitigation. And it's the mitigation credits and issues with mitigation, both physical and credits that cost, that can add quite a bit of cost and delay to the project. Essentially, the Army Corps of Engineers steps in. If it's a locally funded project, the senior agency in the project takes over the project. So if you're going to do a project with local funding, it's going to be run by the Army Corps of Engineers, that's a fair certainty. If it's a GDOT project and it's federally funded, or if you're an agent with GDOT, then the transportation initiative tends to drive the rest of the study. And there's better advocacy if the study is funded or partnershiped through GDOT and through federal dollars. It does add some complications, but the process and the packaging of it is, you know, it's very systematic. GDOT has a proven process for project development, and that would get you through the environmental hurdles probably easier than if you have to try and work with the Corps on your own or with your consultants. I don't have much experience with the Corps, but we all know that, you know, being a federal agency and sensitive environment, you can imagine the kind of challenges you'll face. So there's a narrative that surrounds all this, where I get into a bit of detail about that. And then we can move to the last page, the cost estimates. So we, I reran the cost estimates through the GDOT model, I looked at right-of-way costs, property values of half a million dollars an acre, probably more than what you might pay in some areas, but you know, that's roughly residential prices these days, about a half a million an acre for undeveloped land. So the right-of-way construction costs, environmental costs in the tables, the single roundabout, the traffic signal, the displaced left turn, and then the single point urban interchange, which is really the flyover. So there, you're looking at between 5 and 12 million dollars as, you know, for the different options that you could pursue. The next step is which one? And that's where it becomes a little bit subjective. If you were to place a very high emphasis on congestion relief, you would probably pick the flyover option. Because it gets you the most residual capacity. And when we look at existing traffic flows, we're looking at the service volume, not the actual demand. So when we provide a solution and model it, we're actually modeling the flows that are only getting through today, but the queues tell us the demand is higher. So any of these solutions that doesn't give us residual capacity are going to be a problem. They won't even solve today's demand. They may solve the service volume for today, but they won't solve the demand. So we had to make sure that, and that's why these other options survive. The flyover survived, the displaced left turn, which is that number six, survived because they provide that extra residual capacity that we're certain you need. And that's not talking about a lot of growth, that's just saying to service the demand that's there today, you need a solution of that scale. So we go through that, if you put a heavier emphasis on safety, anything with a roundabout in it is going to survive that kind of a screening. If you put a heavy emphasis on environment, it doesn't really matter. You're going to be into permits, all of the options have environmental impacts, and it's all in varying degrees, but you're still going to have issues with wetlands and mitigation. So it kind of neutralizes the environmental question because they all have impacts. The congestion is a high, a strong motivator, and safety is very close behind. So we sought first to solve the congestion problem that creates the safety issue, and then look at options that produce residual capacity, a legacy, a benefit. then look at options that produce residual capacity, a legacy, a benefit. A flyover is a pretty ambitious undertaking. You're going to have to import fill. That's why the price went up from, you know, eight million to about eleven, twelve million. That and escalation and inflation in the past six months to a year. We've just seen prices go up about thirty percent in the Atlanta area on construction work. If we can find a contractor that's capable and willing to do it with our process. So that's essentially what we've put together, and I ranked them again on the far right corner of the last table fifteen. Ranked number one is the flyover with a roundabout. It's, although it looks invasive, the roundabout option gives you, it takes out the signal timing factor where you don't have to wait for a light at nine or ten at night or midday, or when there's hardly any traffic from one direction, you get kind of a free-flow effect going. And yet you get the flyover of a single lane in each direction. I want to say that. This is not a four-lane bridge over the intersection. This is one lane in each direction. And that matches up with what's downstream. You know, if you're going to widen Demeray all the way down to Frederica at four lanes, then all we're doing is moving the problem. So this is just eliminating the problem at Demeray and Sea Island and not trying to transfer all of it down the road. There'll still be a degree of congestion, but we're looking at about thirty to fifty percent additional capacity over what those intersections provide today.
Mark, on the flyover option, how did you, what do you do about traffic while the flyover is being built?
Yeah, well, and that's why the cost is going up, because the staging and constructability factors are high. And in order to build detour roadways, or temporary, you're talking about wetland impacts. So, you know, it'll have to be staged very carefully. There'll be congestion, and there's probably no good time of year to do it. So this is an ambitious undertaking.
I didn't write them down personally. You said congestion to resiliency, was that it?
Residual capacity.
Residual capacity.
Yeah, that was one of the scope items I wanted to bring in was to, you know, to try to quantify just how much extra capacity we could provide. Because you've been looking at this idea of a capacity study for the island. You know, what's the limiting factor? Is it sewer and water capacity? Is it road capacity? You know, depending on how many units you have and what your commitment might be, you know, to look at that balancing, the balance sheet and say, well, we can provide this much in roadway capacity, but we can't match it up with sewer and water. So, you know, which one is the limit? And I'm not answering the other questions about water, wastewater, but in the transportation side, this key intersection is the bottleneck. And the other two being over by Harris Teeter and the one by the barbecue, I call it that because I eat there. So it's, those are the, really, the three critical intersections, and the links between are obviously congested with driveways and such. But the main thing is that Sea Island-Demeray intersection. So we give you, you know, thirty or forty percent residual capacity there, you know, that unlocks that bottleneck, and then, you know, the rest goes into the system. And I'm not saying that that's going to be so easy either, because you're looking at a roundabout at Frederica and Sea Island over by the plaza to solve that congestion problem. And we don't want to create so much, you know, free traffic flow at Demeray and Sea Island that it just moves the problem. But that's a difficult question to answer because it's such a distance between those two intersections. We can say, well, the discharge from one is trickling over to the other, and it just eventually accumulates. But there's some time-of-day things, like the noon hour is probably one of the worst times to be over there. Not so much at seven in the morning. PM and noon hour would be their problems. So it wasn't comprehensive. We didn't look at all three of those key intersections in this study. That might be useful to do. But I think here, if we would have provided something that said, oh, you can double the capacity at Sea Island-Demeray, I'd be worried about everything downstream. But this is really shaving off the peak, eliminating the congestion at that critical confluence of the four leg, and having just enough extra capacity that you can match the demand that's already there that you're not servicing, because it sits queued all through the peak hours.
When you talk about thirty to forty percent, of course, my community commissioners hear me always using the term density and capacity. With that thirty to forty percent residual capacity, what is a time forecast of consumption of that being used out?
Well, there's two components to it. One is the growth, if you're thinking about time forecast. How many more units does that equate to? I wish I could answer that question. You know, if I could quantify that, that's the smoking-gun silver bullet solution. How many more units? But the other part of the problem, not just units, the other part of the problem is how much demand that's unserviced today is going to soak up that residual. Let's suppose that because of the way the queuing is today, that twenty percent, or half of that additional capacity disappears immediately. Anyone that's worked in California, you know, or seen the freeway program there knows, when you build it, it's full the day it opens. That's because there's latent demand. There's demand there that was never serviced. So when they forecast these facilities, they're basically forecasting them to take up the demand that's already there, not talking about additional growth. So I can't guarantee that this is going to provide so much extra capacity for island development. It may not. There's already so much demand that you may soak up most of it just by meeting that current, relieve some congestion, and then the patterns are going to change slightly. You know, we've done a reassignment of traffic based on origins and destinations. We know where people are going, whether it's Kingsway, Sea Island, or Demeray. We know where they're going and where they're coming from. With those numbers, we reassign that traffic, and some of those patterns might be not exactly as we predicted. So there's going to be some soak-up of some of that excess residual in just the demand that's there now.
Well, this is the purpose of this survey, and all that y'all did was to tackle the problems at the peak hours. I mean, because I was looking at the Demeray, excuse me, the Kingsway coming from the village coming in, and it looks like all of them there is moving a stop sign.
Are you looking at this?
Yes.
Okay, let's go to the displays at the back, because they're full-size and you can see them on screen.
And that traffic backs up to Sea Island roundabout.
Just page ahead to, there you go, keep going.
Right there.
Now, there's larger versions of that. I'll show you in a second. Here we go. No, you're going backwards, sorry. It's all the way at the end of the report. There. First one, two point one. Okay, so there's the flyover. So this is...
I'm not referring to that. I mean, that's what you've been concentrating on more than anything else. I'm talking about this congestion here, coming off the island, backing up at this stop sign here. The stop sign now is on this side of the road, stopping this traffic flowing off, which is, could be horrendous. Looks like you're moving the stop sign to the other side of the road, and that's basically it.
Well, that's only...
For this quadrant here.
Right, and that's all you need to do.
Because there's two-way traffic on Demeray.
I understand that. I understand that.
And now it's only yacht club traffic coming down to that stop, which is, what, ten vehicles an hour?
We could do that tomorrow.
Exactly. Yeah, that's not where the money is being put. It's all up at the top.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, I know that that is a traffic concern.
Yes.
All the way back to the Sea Island golf course.
We just, we didn't have to kill that, we didn't have to hit that flea with a sledgehammer. We just have to change the control and create a merge from the Causeway down into Kingsway. The outbound traffic going towards Sea Island, that doesn't have to stop. That's just going to free-flow. So you just, by changing priority, we remove this whole rotary weaving problem that's plagued this triangle for years and years. I couldn't find aerial photos far enough back to see when it was built, but I suspect it was in the 50s.
The rotary? It was built in 2000, when I was on the commission.
Okay, well, Google Earth didn't go far enough back. But that's, it's rare to see that kind of thing. American Association of Highway Transportation officials took these out of the guidelines back in the 1950s. So nobody was building these after the 60s. They were replacing them with roundabouts or interchanges.
Well, it's sort of like right now. Money, permitting, and time.
So there, you can see the flyover, the roundabout underneath. Obviously, some wetland impacts in the southeast quadrant, northwest quadrant. I think that's hospital property, schools in the other quadrant, and there's a little bit of take there. The red lines indicate the right-of-way limits today, so, you know, we added up the cost of land, and it's more the environmental impact than the sheer cost of land.
Can you move that roundabout toward the south, some, pull it into the exit that's coming off not that far? You see the exit ramp right there? Can you not pull the roundabout down into that area and get off to the other side of it? Skew the line a little bit, drag it?
I don't know. You got the pointer.
This road right here, can we not drag the roundabout down a little bit, bring this road into it a little different?
Now, the problem is that the traffic to and from Demeray and the Causeway has to get back across the bridge. In order to go westbound, they have to get on the other side of the bridge. The circle, the circle keeps it there and keeps the traffic on that side. If we pull the circle away from the bridge, or pull the bridge over...
I'm just talking about bringing it just down a little bit, but you've got this conflict with the lake.
You do, yeah.
Right now. So it seems like if we could bring it, bring it back a little bit, we'd get out of this right-of-way encroachment here and here.
Yeah, I would rule out those possibilities, sure.
And the traffic that's coming off of Kingsway to exit, they come down and do a complete circle there to get off?
They make a left turn at the circle. So they're going north, and they go around...
Right here.
Yeah, no, but they go north and then underneath the circle, underneath the bridge, no, to the right.
Oh, okay.
There you go. And left, and then on, and they merge with...
Okay, I see. Thank you.
Let me ask you something on, if we can go to two point three, the consolidated roundabout overview. And basically...
That's that option.
So basically, if I understood you correctly on this particular rendering, what are the benefits of this? We don't get the residual capacity, is that correct?
Right.
But what do we get out of this?
Well, it solves the core problem with the rotary. So it removes the weaving sections, the other little stop control we talked about. You still have free flow from the Causeway down to Kingsway. It just creates, you know, a different means of alternating the flow of traffic at Sea Island and Demeray. It's a more complex roundabout, too. That's the one problem. That's a three-lane roundabout. I've done a couple dozen three-lane roundabouts, and they work pretty well, but they're not easy to navigate.
So it is a three-lane as opposed to a two-lane?
Yes, right. It's a complicated roundabout.
We have trouble with that.
I don't have to try and argue that anymore. Where we built them, they've typically been at interchanges, the setup, the overhead signs. It's not like you have down at the barbecue where you've got driveways and local streets and all kinds of friction on the approaches and no overhead signs. That's what's creating the problem there, that roundabout suffers from poor alignment and a lot of things. So I mean, it still works reasonably well, but if you made that into three lanes and brought it up here, you're looking at a pretty complex layout. And it's also got a bigger footprint. And so to spend five million dollars on that and not to get residual capacity, it might just shave some of the peak off, and you get the benefits of elimination of some of the safety issues, but you get back some of the property damage crashes, too.
Well, I mean, when we're talking about, when we talk about residual capacity, then you have to start really saying, and where does that residual capacity go downstream? And where, part of the problem, as I see it, is, of course, safety, the safety issues. We've got issues with people coming off the Causeway at sixty, seventy miles an hour.
It's free-flow.
It's free-for-all going through that little area there. It looks like this eliminates some of the safety issues that we're experiencing there and some of...
Definitely better than the current traffic signal. Better in capacity and better in safety that way.
So tell me about, when you mentioned earlier, with these projects, the federal and local and state matching grants, I mean, how does that play into everything here? Because if we're talking about eleven, twelve million dollars on your estimate on this one, that's a big, big number. Is there federal dollars, are you saying, for that?
The safety case is pretty strong at that intersection, and it has to compete with other intersections in the state for safety dollars, federal safety dollars. But the state does, frequently does, local program match and local program cooperation. I'm working on a roundabout in Athens where the state's putting in two and a half million dollars, and the city, Athens Clark County's picking up the rest. So that partnership, it's just shaving off some of the excess that they couldn't afford if they did a five-million-dollar project on their own.
How long do those projects typically take from the time you start engaging the state to...
To shovel?
Yeah.
From planning to shovel, about three and a half years.
Three and a half years?
But if the Corps runs your project...
And there's a possibility that they wouldn't take it either, right?
Yes, yeah, you have to. But this is where it starts. I tried to produce a study that had essentially all the elements that they would expect to see to make a case for them.
So it almost sounds like you're saying that there's a gamble going with the federal or state, whether or not we could get those funds. And there would be a time, sort of a time to wait and see if it comes to bat, or are we just, as a community, bite the bullet and come up with, pay for the solution? Is that what I'm hearing?
Exactly. It's just, the Army Corps of Engineers is the critical question. If, as the senior agency in the project, you know, they look at the wetlands, there's permits required, they essentially run the project for you. They become the project manager, and you're beholden to their schedule, their timing. And the advocacy benefit of a state-run project is stronger for federal, because the federal agency becomes, FHWA, becomes the driver on the project development and not the Army Corps of Engineers.
Absolutely. You hear me talk about Corps of Engineers all the time.
I mean, there's due diligence, they have to do their work. It's just, the advocacy benefits are greater because GDOT has an Office of Environmental Services, they liaise with the Corps all the time, they're experienced at it, you know, it's a different...
At least from my perspective, part of the question is, you know, obviously, we've got an issue here that needs to be dealt with, and we've got to fund it. And if we're banking on funds from the state or federal level, there is some risk. So if we just put, let's say we're banking on that, and we put away twenty or thirty percent as a match, considering that might be our match, if it doesn't happen, then we don't really have enough money to do anything at all.
It doesn't take that long to have that question answered, you know, at the state level.
How long do you think that would take? A year?
Eight months. You know, I mean, this is a strategic project in terms of state interest. You know, it's regional tourism benefits and so on. That's partly why I got so interested in it, because this is a very important project for the state. It's not just, you know, a county somewhere that has a congestion problem. It's high-profile. And if you can solve problems like this and, you know, create incentive and so on to continue development or to, you know, make it a more palatable situation, and the state can participate, that kind of partnership is very attractive, so.
And Chairman, if I could add to Mark's answer, Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. As you know, we're part of the Metropolitan Planning Organization with BATS here. So the whole point of BATS is your federal and state money comes because of regional and state coordination. So the first thing we would do is take this plan and put it in, take this road improvement and put it into our transportation plans to tell the state, this is what's important to us, and it does a couple of things. They have ranked what they think are the most important road concerns in Glynn County. So this will let them evaluate that against the other projects in Glynn County, and they can reprogram some of those funds outside of the safety funds that come through special pots of funding. So I agree with Mark, within eight months, you can have, I think, pretty good detailed information about the different types of state and federal funding you could use on a program and what the importance and timing of that would be.
Well, I think, you know, in my time on the board, I mean, when you look at the US-17 widening project, I mean, that's been going on for twenty years. Matter of fact, they told us, was it this time last year or fourteen months ago, we're going to start in the next sixty days. I hadn't seen anything happen in sixty days. I mean, when you start dealing with GDOT, I mean, aren't you necessarily, I mean, you're running the risk that you're on their timetable at that point, is that correct?
Well, and I think that's what Mark is telling you about, how you can select what relationship you want with them. There are times that you can still be the lead, but they are a funding partner. So I think that maybe the next step is to let us know which, or if you want to go ahead and narrow down which ones to advance, or if you want to advance more than one, and then you can direct me to get with our BATS staff support team and come back to you with the different potential funding options.
Well, I mean, I'm just speaking for myself, and if I'm out of line here, Commissioners, y'all jump in. But, I mean, the reality is, if we put this on a splosh, how do we quantify what money we're going to put on... what money we're going to put on a SPOST towards this solution? And can we have, we're not going to really have any answers at this point or anytime soon if, if we're going to try to go for the match, is that correct?
Not in the next month, no.
So.
Not for June, when you talked about your SPOST budget.
Okay. So if we were to go forward with putting money towards this project, we would have to decide how much money and whether or not we'd go for a grant. And hopefully, we would have set aside enough money as the matching portion for, for the local portion of it with the hope that maybe we'll get federal or state funds to complete the project.
I mean, you could, you could work up some hypothetical, you know, funding streams, you know, with a couple of phone calls. That's certainly doable. I mean, you talk to the state traffic engineer about his, his funding programs, they've got a very sizable highway safety improvement priority, funded projects, congestion mitigation, funding as well in the operations side. This project is kind of a crossover between both. It solves a congestion problem and a safety issue at the same time. So you, which is great because it's not just one, we often see they're singularly just one, not the other. And so you, this one has a nexus of, of two issues, really, being able to solve both.
Mark, what are the, the chances of getting a favorable response from the state, the federal government? Obviously, you feel like that curing the, for the most part, curing the problem rather than putting a Band-Aid on it would be our best chance of getting those, those kinds of funds. And, you know, Mr. Chairman, I think we need to decide what we want to do, which, which one of these options we want to go forward with. We started this project and the flyover was a joke, we thought. I mean, it was, it was laughable and here we are with the, in your opinion, and you certainly know more about it than I do, with a flower. And so.
And a roundabout underneath it.
And a roundabout underneath it, and I can't imagine that being on a SPOST project. I, I would hate to have to get on the radio and articulate that one.
I think you could do it.
Yeah.
I got the complete confidence.
I bet you I could, too. I was so good at the last SPOST that we've got beat on. Yeah. So I, I think we need to go ahead and decide what we want to, what we want to go for, I guess.
Let me, let me ask you. You're, you're saying that, that flyover with a roundabout underneath is about, you know, 12 million dollars?
Yeah.
How confident are you to lose cost?
Well, I, I just kept.
Is that last week's cost?
No, I kept adding percentages. So we started, I think the original one was about seven, eight million.
And a flyover itself, a single lane?
It's a, it's a single, it's a 40-foot wide bridge. It's a single lanes, two 12-foot lanes plus eight feet, 16 feet on either side. So you're looking at about 40 feet of pavement, of bridge wall to bridge wall, 5% slopes, 200 feet of bridge, it's about 12,000 square feet of bridge deck, you know, there's, and that's why I use the GDOT model, because I, I'm testing my own thinking, seeing, I'm thinking it's about in the range of 10 million. And I ran the numbers and I played with the numbers and just, you know, shake it, kick it and see if, if I can, you know, go up or down. Property costs were a factor. The environmental cost is somewhat of a placeholder because mitigation credits aren't cheap, you know, the bank is, they eventually run out and then you can't buy anymore. So, and because it's a market-driven thing, you know, the environmental credits are, are sort of an unknown here, so. And I threw in an extra 10% because we've got congestion staging, constructability, imported fill, probably piled bridge foundations. So there's some, some high premiums going with a, a structure like this.
Mark, I'm walking this project through with GDOT and, and the federal government. I mean, is that something that we would engage your firm to help us walk that through? Because the reality is, it's a tangled web up there.
Well, you know, GDOT has a couple dozen, you know, highly regarded firms that do this kind of work every day, day in, day out. My firm has lots of people who do this kind of work and there's lots of other firms who do it, too. And it's, the project development process is, is difficult to get through and you have to have people that know how to do it. They have to have NEPA, you know, NEPA being environmental policy, people who are aware of the Protection Act and, and so on. That's all part of this. So, you know, it's a multidisciplinary team that's typically, typically does it. We'll bring in specialists for things like ecology if there's some, some part of the habitat that we don't have people for or archeological that you need help.
Mark, you've done a lot of sporty things, I'm sure, in your career. This got to be right up there at the top of the heap.
You know, this, GDOT and other states, you know, I moved here about five, six years ago to help GDOT develop their roundabout program. And as, as that five years has, has come to a point where this kind of thing is in the toolbox for GDOT. And, and they, they don't overlook this at all. This is right in the, it's right in the center of the stage with everything else. These things called displaced left turns or CFIs, they're not shy to do it. They've done enough of them. They've done the diverging diamond crossovers on 85 up by Pleasant Hill and Jimmy Carter, those, and they've been in service. There's issues with signal timing on those, but you should see how much traffic gets through, so.
But they actually presented one to us for the other end of the causeway, 17 figures.
Yeah, yeah, for that, for that triple left turn movement. It's, sure. Yeah, so this is not, you know, the challenges here are you've got bigger environmental constraints at a remote location. So the constructability factors and traffic staging are going to be a challenge. But we, we, we can do this kind of thing and we know other people can, too. It's not that unusual anymore.
Can, can you do a flyover that's aesthetically pleasing?
Absolutely. You can do all kinds of things. Colors, you know, a lot, a lot of states do that.
I'm reminded of an old saying in the Bible. It says, "This is the day that the Lord is made and we should be glad and rejoicing."
The weather's good and we're all healthy.
We knew this day was coming upon this commission. And we knew this was a very difficult project to tackle. And I think we got as top of advice and counsel as you can get, and it's going to be a long project.
There's several ways.
Lot of twists and turns and I'm just telling you that the Corps of Engineers issue under the current administration is in a mess. And it's going to take a lot of navigation. We certainly want the DOT to be our lead agency. I just can't explain to you what, what erect that is right now. So I'm certainly, if you don't do this and you don't do something, then you, you're talking about moratoriums on buildings and, you know, all the stuff that we don't want because the growth is going to continue to push you. There's no denying that. So I'm, I'm certainly pleased with the presentation. I'm glad in principle to make a motion that this is our selection as a flyover with a roundabout and continue to work with them to move this project forward. Are y'all prepared to do that? I'm prepared.
Well, if we necessarily make the motion today, we'd look for consensus, but are there any other commissioners want to comment on this or do you want to take a day or two to think about it and maybe talk about it on Thursday?
Well, to do, well, to do the motion in a regular meeting, in a work session would be my opinion on something of the magnitude of all this stuff here. We don't need to be doing it in a work session.
I did. The, the safety issues, the difference, what's, what's the difference in them when we're considering this? Because I guess for me, that would be the number one consideration. And so I need to know how to look at this. If, you know, we choose this, but it's not the most safe, if this number one, but it's not the most safe selection, then what does that mean versus the most safe selection?
Well, of, of the short list of solutions, this is the most safe solution.
Okay.
So it, where traffic crosses paths, speeds are the lowest in those conflict points. That's where the roundabout, you know, wins. Roundabouts reduce all crashes by about 40% and fatalities and injuries by up to 80%. So that's a nationally recognized statistic. Every state that's done roundabouts is experiencing those benefits. So that, the roundabout, whether it has a bridge over it or not, is going to be a safer solution. The problem is the three-lane roundabouts got some issues with property damage crashes because of people not understanding it, wayfinding. And it just looks like a lot of roundabout for that intersection.
So this is, out of all of the choices, this is the safe, the number one would be the safest?
I was going to say, this is a mini version of several that are in the Atlanta area. They all have signals and they're called single-point urban interchanges, but they have five and six lanes over top and each of them on the under, on the under crossings, two and three lanes, double and triple left turns. We, we've got, this is about as simple as it could be. I mean, we only have one double left turn. All the other movements are single lanes crossing, crossing under the bridge and it's a lane in each direction over the bridge. It's a mini version of some of these larger ones that have been built for years in, in the Atlanta area.
Okay, well, then for me, the next would be the environmental concerns. So what's the difference in the ranking?
There's not, there's not a lot of difference. All of them require permits, all of them will have impacts. You know, without going into excruciating detail on, on, you know, exactly where those impacts occur and which habitats and so on, we can't say, you know, precisely how much.
But we're not eliminating a place for the turtles or whoever, whatever animals forever with one selection versus another?
Well, it's, it's not apparent, you know, from, from this early screening. We didn't do any field inventories. We know that, you know, the habitat's full of all kinds of critters that, that we have to be aware of and sensitive of their habitats. So field studies will have to confirm that and just how to mitigate any impacts. The one, this estuary wetland that essentially connects across to the wide-open wetland area, those two are saltwater. The next one to the north, just on where the, where Demeray Road is, there's a little freshwater area that connects with that estuary and, and that's, obviously freshwater's draining down into the estuary. But the, there's a corridor in the form of a culvert that crosses there. And that means wildlife can move freely between the two areas. And so those, those are the kinds of things that, that come up. And that's common to all the options, all those issues are. So it's, I, I can't see one that wins over another. The large roundabout has a bigger footprint, but the bridge has its own issues, you know, with soils and foundations.
Mr. Chairman, if it's the consensus of the board, if I could get with Mark and Public Works Director Austin and Mr. Fallon and maybe come to y'all the first meeting in June, rather than in two days, just to make sure that we've got all of our ducks in a row about what the next steps would be and how we would propose to get there? And I'm hearing option 1A, flyover with a roundabout underneath it.
I think that's probably the option that we're looking at right now. I think we probably want to know, you know, what's the process and how would we go from here to get there? And what can we expect from timetables and, and maybe what we need to expect as a commission on local matching money, what we might need to set aside for.
And how long would it take Monica Harden to find us some money?
She probably already has. She's watching it live.
And I'll, I'll speak to my contacts at GDOT, see if we can map out a process to report at that time.
Okay. Cap, is that okay for you?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mark, thank you for that presentation. It was very thorough.
You're welcome.
Well, I told you guys it'd be a long meeting today. First one, one hour, so. Item number two is receiver, a report and a request from Judge Wallace-Herald. Judge Herald?
Judge Herald, you know anything about roundabouts?
I'm glad I knocked you off. I'd rather be a judge than that. Y'all got a hard job and I appreciate what y'all do. As indicated, I'm a judge, I'm magistrate court judge, and I'm here today to try to get a raise from my part-time judges. And it occurred to me as I was thinking about it, some of you may not know what's a part-time judge and why do we have them? Well, we have them because we have to have a, a judge available every day and night of the year. A judge has to be available to sign search warrants and arrest warrants all the time, not just some of the time. And so for that reason, we have part-time judges. And I'm here today to try to get them a raise. It's, this sort of came about in an odd sort of way about a month ago, the Superior Court Judge has got a raise. And that mushroomed because the state court judge, his salary is based upon what the Superior Court Judge's salary is. And then my salary is based upon what the state court judge is. And so everybody got a raise, Superior Court Judges got a raise, the State Court Judge got a raise, I got a raise, thank you very much, but my part-time judges did not get a raise. And so I'm here to ask you all why, for a raise for them. At present, they make $1,000 a month and I'm asking you to raise it by $500. We need, we need them because, as I say, we have to have a judge available all the time. And we have court every day of the week, all year long, starting Monday through Friday. We have court, somebody's, one of me or one of the other judges are in court every day of the week. We are, we are on call every day of the week. As a matter of fact, the way, way we work it, I'm on call every Monday night and the other three judges are on call each night. And on Friday night, whoever's on call the weekend covers that. So I need, we need the part-time judges. And as I say, I would hope y'all would look favorable upon giving them a $500 a week raise.
Judge, how many part-time judges do you have? How many part-time judges do you?
We have three.
You have three, okay. But there were four.
There were four. That's right. And what happened, the, as a matter of fact, when I got elected, I, I had been a part-time judge and so my, I created a vacancy. And the three other judges that were left said, see if you can get the commission to pay us, divide it up and to pay us what that fourth judge would get. And so they decided not to have the fourth judge, that they would cover for, for that, cover the need for that fourth judge themselves. And so they got sort of a raise by getting what that fourth judge would have cost, divided three ways.
Working more hours, huh? Working more hours.
Yes, yes, working more hours, right.
So you don't anticipate creating another part-time judge if you're going to stay with what you have?
Yes, we're not going to create another part-time judge.
Y'all feeling comfortable with that number?
I am comfortable. It, it works out very well. They do, they, they sit in law every day, but they are willing to, to do, it's a sort of a service to, to give yourself up from my law practice for this period of time to go try a case in, in magistrate court or to go read rights on Sunday morning at the, at the courthouse or to go, go sign warrants at midnight or have them come to you and sign a warrant at midnight. They're willing to, to, to do that. It, it takes, it does take three or four judges to be able to make all this work, including me. So it can work with three part-time judges and me full-time.
I know that magistrate court, from my dealing with it, is one of the most heavy-volume courts that we have.
It's the most possible court you have. We make more money for the county than anybody else that I know of. And so, and we have a great staff, as you know, you've been there. We have great staff working there that Ron Adams hires and, and appoints. And I think it's a very, a very good court, but as I say, I, I would like to see them get what I consider, not not a huge raise, $500. It's sort of like, you got a raise, the other judges got a raise, why didn't I get a raise? And I think this is sort of a modest increase.
Judge, when's the last time they got a real raise? Nope?
They haven't ever gotten a real raise that I know anything about.
They need to run for county commissioner.
Well, I thought y'all were well-paid.
Oh, we are. We all work for money.
And you're asking for five hundred dollars per month or per week? Per month, per judge?
Yeah, it would go from a thousand, I think their salary right now is a thousand dollars a month. I'm asking it to be fifteen hundred a month. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you for listening to me. Commissioners, is consensus okay to have Mr. Fallon work with Ms. Munson to see if we can identify if that's available for the budget?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Item number three, discussion, the solicitor's request for a pay increase, Ms. Loogie?
Was that an intimidation by the county?
Good afternoon. Maria Loogie, the solicitor for Glen County. Same situation almost as Judge Harrell. Our volume is unbelievable. Mr. Bryant had been around recently, y'all know the numbers. It's astronomical what we're going through in state court with the number of misdemeanors that come through. What got me going on this entire situation is back in 2019, I had contacted Mr. Hours because I was seeing a trend already. I didn't rock the boat for a very long time. I had a little private practice on the side. I never let it interfere with solicitor position. Solicitor position has always been number one. Born and raised here, it's my schoolmates and the people that put me in, so it's always been number one. Little office fell to the wayside, not a problem. Well, come 2019, I had contacted Mr. Hours and asked him to help me to make the position full-time. And he wanted to know if it was, could I do it all by myself? And I said, no, sir, that's not possible because we average anywhere from eleven thousand something cases a year to the most we ever had was eighteen thousand and something. And so I have a little handout for y'all, just to show that I did do it. The emails that I sent to him and then I've got some numbers about other counties. My situation is a little bit more involved because I don't want to compare myself to the magistrate judges, but they are able to do their full-time private practices whenever they choose. Due to the volume that I am impacted with in the solicitor's office, this is two days of court. I had court yesterday, I had bench trials. The other is a hundred and twenty cases. The others will be on the 26th. I take cases home every single night to try to keep up with the pace of what the court has ordered. What got me going again this year, it was this reason I went and spoke to Mr. Stewart in March of this year, was because we had gotten the calendar, January and February I was handling pretty well. But when the calendar came out for the rest, it was up through July. To give you some of the numbers, I had fourteen days of court and twenty-one business days. In March, eighteen days of court and twenty-three business days. June is gonna hit me really, really hard. Twenty days of court and twenty-two business days. There's no way, I don't know how fast y'all read, but it takes me several hours to go through and read those cases to be prepared for court. And whether those defendants and witnesses show up or not, I have to be ready because I don't know who's coming in. And there's also videos that I have to watch, these DUI stops and the body cams and everything. It is quite time-consuming. And so be that as it may, I'm spending not only the time that I'm physically sitting in the office, because whether I'm in the actual courtroom or not, I'm in the office. And while I'm in the office, I'm doing motions, I'm answering calls. And one morning I had meetings with two police officers. They asked me about cases, is this, would you prosecute this case? Do we have enough here? Anybody else that may come in, victims that may need to meet with me personally about their family violence cases? I do all my own transfers, I do, I review the accusations. And to also give you another idea of some of the numbers, we were audited today because we have to be compliant with GCIC and making sure that everyone is certified and understands the importance of privacy and not handing out information that shouldn't be handed out. And we passed everything with going results, thank goodness. I wouldn't settle for any less. But from December the 8th to February the 24th, we ran seven hundred and seventy-nine criminal histories only. Just in those few months. That means that Maria looked at those criminal histories because they were all associated to different cases. Now, me being part-time and having a judge that's full-time and a clerk that's full-time, I don't even know why it ever started out that way in the history of Glen County. Because it just makes sense that if the other electives are full-time, that the solicitor who has to prosecute all the cases needs to be full-time as well. Well, as you know, I'm part-time. I had enough money in my budget and I had two contract part-time attorneys. And they come in and they help me from time to time. Well, I lost one due to illness. He's not gonna be able to come back due to physical infirmities. And then another young woman has found a position that's full-time and it gives her a better opportunity, so I can't hold that against her. So right now, I'm left kind of holding the bag, doing all this extra effort to try to stay above water. And my other assistant that's helping me right now actually lives in Wayne County and he's commuting over to help me a couple times a month, just so that I can stay above without drowning. Because when I asked for help, I just wanted to switch things around with the calendar just a little bit. I just needed to have an opportunity to maybe do something easier than bench trials or calendar calls that involve so much research and having to read all this. And it was not received well. And so, in fact, some of the numbers were increased. So in the meantime, speaking with Mr. Stewart, he had told me, and I was encouraged to get some numbers in comparison to Glen County, to Athens-Clark County and Lowns County. Those are, that's the section number two, no, I'm sorry. It's the first section after that first email. Okay, I've been doing this for fourteen years now and I just told y'all that I had lost a couple attorneys. But over in Athens-Clark County, they have fifteen full-time staff, of which seven are attorneys and they have support staff. Some of those are part-time, but the majority are full-time. You can see what the salary is for that solicitor's position. And if you compare our 2019 cases here in Glen County, we had eleven thousand nine hundred and fifty-three. Athens-Clark County had four thousand and seventy-one. Lowns County had nineteen thousand six hundred and twenty. But they also have ten full-time, which consists of two full-time attorneys, seven full-time support staff and one part-time support staff. And then just for good measure, I threw in Wayne County, which is significantly smaller, and put the number of years of service, one attorney, one part-time staff, no, I'm sorry, one full-time staff. You can see what his pay is. And the number of cases are just a portion, one-tenth almost, of what we do here in Glen County. So at the end of the day, I think that it makes sense that even into the future that this position needs to be full-time. And unfortunately, when I went to speak with Mr. Stewart, of course, it was in March and I only had about two weeks. And the session, I found it had to be by local legislation. Well, the session was coming to an end. And so I was told that I needed to contact Mr. Hogan and Mrs. McNeil and heard back from Mrs. McNeil's office. And they said for me to get a letter and send it to her. Well, I called Erin Mumford and I said, they told me that I could do this, but here's the deal. I do not want to infringe or cause any ill will between myself and our local county commissioners because I would not want you all to feel disrespected or to feel that I have bypassed the proper procedure or procedure that I would consider to be most respectful. And so I put it on the back burner and then, of course, the session ended before I could get anything done. So the point of this being here today is that I'm asking that my pay would be increased comparable to that of Athens-Clark County or Lowns County, somewhere right in the middle, based on our numbers and the fact that I'm part-time, I'm actually doing more for sure than Athens-Clark. And we're running kind of close with Lowns County. And my rationalization is that perhaps those funds could come from my budget, that I still have the funds in there because I've lost a couple people. And allow me to use up some of those funds for my pay if that's allowable. And then come January, make it a full-time position through local legislation and then get those funds, let me keep those funds and bring on the other attorneys again. And then get the funding from the general fund. The county is growing, y'all know the numbers. I mean, it's thousands. We also got the administrative office statistics in here. And Glen County, I mean, our growth based upon our population size as far as crimes in here is just absolutely out the roof. And so you have to have, we have to have people to do these cases. I love my job, I always have, born and raised here, but I need some help. And it's very difficult for me to have to go home every single day. Like I said, I don't know how fast y'all read, but for me to go home every single day, and my staff can attest to this, or ask some of the folks in the courthouse, I'm taking cases home every day out that back door, every day. And I want to continue to improve that office. You've never heard any controversy about us. I hope you never do. We try to do everything above board. And I hope that you all will give this some consideration and see that this is warranted and it needs to be considered into the future for the people that come after me.
Do you, you are prepared to prepare for legislation for this next session to move forward with a permanent status?
I'd be happy to prepare it.
I've visited your office and I'm aware of the volume that y'all do at state court. And I don't know how you do keep up with what you do keep up with prosecuting. You're the DA for the state court, basically is what you are.
That's absolutely correct.
With the title of solicitor.
Yes, sir.
I know that the staff that they have and I know that the volume that you do is probably two or three times what they do. You have six-man juries versus twelve-man juries.
That's correct.
But the procedure is still the same. You have to go through jury selections. You have to, you have to prepare cases, you have to prepare calendars. And I see that this is a warranted position. And I, with you, I can't really understand why it was ever a part-time position because the volume that Glen County handles is tremendous. When, do you know a little bit of history about this solicitor's office? When was it created? And was it created as a part-time position at that time?
All I know is that...
Or was it pro se lawyers that came in and did that back in the day?
Only, and in trying to find out some research about it, it's really kind of difficult. I know that Lloyd Thompson was a solicitor at one time. Jerry Ramsey actually filled in for a time period when there was some issues that were taking place. Richard Taylor had been in there for about twenty-something years. And nobody ever really rocked the boat and they never had the volume that we have these days. I mean, in 2022, we're just so far beyond anything they could have, you know, surmised way back then that the numbers are just so high, they couldn't have predicted it, there was no way to predict it. But also, one other point is that we have been approached by the Georgia Justice Project. And their intent is to come into Glen County, they've already done this program up in Cobb County. And their intent, I think Mr. Jazz is present, their intent is to come into Glen County and have what's called an expungement second chance desk. The law changed up in Atlanta for the state and that is that you will be able to have two misdemeanors in your criminal history, the word used to be expunged. Well, I want to do anything I can to try to accommodate people in the county that I can possibly do. As long as it's legal and everything, of course, I'll do it. But again, their vision is going to involve my office. And my office being involved, that's going to take up more time because that means additional criminal histories that are gonna have to be run outside of what we're doing actively in the courtroom. Because these people will have already been convicted. But we're the ones that are certified to run those records. And then we have to let them know what the results of those records are so that decision can be made. So that's gonna take up time for me.
And you've spoken, I guess you've had meetings with the clerk of state court and the judges, the judge of state court, and they're all on board with what you're trying to accomplish.
They have told me also, we never understood why the solicitor's position was part-time. And like I said, I just let it rock along. And till after COVID, I probably, if it hadn't got as bad as it's gotten, I probably would have still let it rock along. But there's no way when you've got twenty business, twenty-two business days and twenty days of court that I can avoid not taking it home. There's no way. And so I urge you all to please consider my request and I'd really appreciate it. And if we could, if you decide to go ahead and approve it, like I said, then by January, if we could do the local legislation, so we never know what the future may bring. But whether I'm here or I'm not here, the next person needs to be full-time.
And I asked Maria to look at the expungement process because I think that it's keeping a lot of folk out of the labor force or it's keeping people who can have promotions, the businesses want to promote because they have these things on their record. So it impacts our workforce greatly. I think Cobb County just had a sort of a celebration day. They had about three hundred people that they had been able to help. And so we're trying to not only do this, which would change the lives of a number of people, but it also will help out our businesses. And you all know the shortage in the labor force now. And again, I didn't know that her position was not full-time. To me, it just doesn't make any sense if the judge and the other folk involved in the process are full-time. And for her not to be, or disposition, to not, to not be. And she's been doing the work, but just not, I hadn't been getting paid for it.
That's correct. I've been doing this since 2009. And like I said, it has always been voluminous, but has really, really gotten excruciatingly difficult since about 2018. And so that's why I went ahead and emailed Mr. Hours back in 2019 and said, I need some help. Let me go full-time, tell me what I need to do. But I didn't get any assistance on that.
Commissioners, is there a consensus to have Mr. Fallon, Ms. Munson to look at the proposal she's brought forward? See what we can do this year? And then with the understanding that, you know, with the local legislation and new budgeting process, we might be adding more in the future?
Yes, sir.
Let me just ask one question, and looking at your comparisons here on this sheet.
Okay.
Of your eleven thousand nine hundred and fifty-three total caseload.
Yes, sir.
The bulk of that, nine thousand two hundred and nine, is other traffic. But if you look at Clark County, they don't have anything in that other traffic. Do you know, do they, because, so I'm just trying to, if we're gonna compare the counties, I'm just curious as to why they don't have anything in the other traffic.
Are you looking at the administrative office? Okay, that's strictly from the state? Everything that we gathered up so that I could have this little presentation is listed on here? And that was how they broke it down?
I might be able to make some clarification there. In some counties, Camden, for instance, their probate court handles a lot of their traffic. Where in state court, Glen County handles that traffic. That may be also the case in Clark County, that their probate court handles a percentage or a portion of traffic, which would show up on that sheet.
That is possible, yes, sir.
Yeah, so if you took other traffic away, then Clark County would be more comparable to ours.
Yes, sir.
Certainly doesn't include the parking tickets at the University of Georgia, I can tell you that.
No, sir.
Because I got about a thousand of those between two doctors.
I got five hundred.
I thank y'all for your time and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor.
It's all right with you guys. I think we should take about a 10-minute break. I think we still have a pretty lengthy presentation to go through. So we'll adjourn until, let's come back at 3:35.
First, if you don't mind. My dad used to say that life was more serendipity than plan. When you thought you were holding tight on to the rudder, you were actually just holding on to the gunwales. So my life has sort of been that way. I've been involved with judicial facility planning for almost 50 years now. And I started with the Administrative Office of the Courts here in Georgia in 1975, and served as Judicial Facility Consultant from 75 all the way up to 2008 on a full-time basis for a while and then on a part-time basis. I was the first architect in the history of the country to serve in that capacity in any state. I have had the opportunity to lecture on judicial facility planning at the Institute for Court Management, the National Center for State Courts, the Indiana Judicial Center. And I was one of the panelists on the National Needs Assessment Study for Judicial Facilities in Austin. I conducted the first statewide study of judicial facilities in Georgia in 1973, '74, and '75. And that was the first time that had ever been done. I'm real proud of all of that stuff. I am a licensed architect and have been in practice in architecture in Georgia since 1979. In the last eight years, I've probably built about a half a million, maybe three-quarters of a million square feet of various space. I have worked on over 300 courthouses in 30 states. Okay, and as my dad would say, with 25 cents, I can get you a cup of coffee, okay? The point is that I have seen a lot in the area of judicial facilities. I've seen a tremendous amount. But the one thing that has consistently happened in 50 years of analyzing judicial facility needs is the response that counties have always made to the problems that are confronting the judiciary are immediate and they're crisis-oriented. They don't ever have the opportunity to structure a long-term plan. In business, in the private sector, and all of you know this, what you do is you try to identify where the company needs to be in five years and structure a plan to get there. Unfortunately, in every county in this state, when it comes to structuring solutions for the judiciary over a five-year period, we fall flat. I have seen the judiciary go from a hodgepodge of strange little courts to a unified judicial system. I remember when the state court, and it sort of hurt my feelings a little bit when everybody said, "I can't remember how the solicitor started off as a part-time position." I met the first state court judge in Glen County back in the '70s. He was Ron Adams' daddy. And the reason why the solicitor is part-time was because the judge was part-time. And nothing changed, except the judge. So when the enabling legislation came up, the state court was a brand-new thing. It was what we would call today a boutique court. Now it's a core part of the judicial system. I remember in 1984, Judge McMillan in Sandersville decided that the Superior Court wasn't the place to try juvenile cases. He said you needed to have some special court to do that. So with the help of the Georgia State Legislature, he helped create what is now the juvenile justice system. I have seen the courts change. And I have seen county commissioners try to deal with it. I would like to suggest, after interviewing every department except the probate court in the judiciary in this county, and including the juvenile court, that maybe we ought to look at solving the judicial facility needs in this county slightly differently. Historically, what we did was we built one courthouse. And when that courthouse was no good, we built another courthouse. And then when that courthouse was no good, well, maybe we should build another courthouse. I was lucky. When I came here in 1974, the majority of courthouses in the state, the average age of a courthouse in the state was over 100 years old. And all of them had been replaced by fire. We don't burn courthouses anymore. We have sprinkler systems that protect them. So unfortunately, you have to keep them. My dad used to use the expression, in the dry goods business, we called it a profitable fire. Well, that's how we replace courthouses in Georgia. And we could use a profitable fire in a lot of counties. But I'd like to take you, I'd like to suggest something, that there's an alternative. And I'm going to show you that alternative in a minute. But what I'd also like to tell you, without getting too much into detail, is that you are on a course to a crisis. And it's, I have a friend who's an oncologist. And he said, "The hardest thing I have to do, but it's the most important thing I have to do, is turn to a patient and say, 'You've got cancer.'" The hardest thing I have to do is turn to Board of County Commissioners and say, "I'm sorry, but you've got cancer. Your judicial facilities are inadequate for reasons that I would discuss with you privately, but I don't want to discuss with you publicly. Your juvenile justice center is in an old building that has suffered from sewer gases, sprinkler systems, and the notion that you can take an old office building and turn it into a center to help children get better. So it's time we stop that. It's time, maybe, we look at another alternative. And I'd like to take you on a walk through that alternative. Would you hit the video, please? All right, this is our existing courthouse. Pause it there. This is our complex. We've got, and I can't point. I can point. We've got the existing courthouse on this site. And I guess I'll point here. All right, the old courthouse is there. The historic courthouse is there. That's where the state court started. This is the courthouse we currently have, about 40,000 square feet of space. And then this is the building we're currently in. We've got a chunk of dirt adjacent to us that used to be the house, the site for the jail. It's about two football fields. We've got Reynolds running straight through here. We've got I across here, G across here, and Newcastle coming down like that. Okay, hit it, Quincy, please. Again, hold it right there. I want to talk about this chunk of dirt. Right now, this minute, go ahead. What if we were to take apart of that chunk of dirt and put a building on it? And go ahead and develop a parking lot in what is now grass? And take this area here, and maybe this area here, and turn it into court-only parking, court-only access? And take Reynolds and close it? Now what would happen is we bring inmates in from the back to a secured Sallyport into that side door that all of us know is there. We can bring inmates in this way to a side door that's here and continue to use this courthouse, all right? Then what's the white building? The white building is the solution to your first problem, the juvenile court. The juvenile court, and let's stop calling it a juvenile court. Let's start calling it Juvenile Services Center. I want to quote something from you. An old judge, his name was Walter McMillan, I told you about him. He said, in talking about the juvenile court, "The purpose of Georgia's juvenile court is to protect the well-being of children, to provide guidance and control conducive to a child's welfare and the best interests of the state, and to secure as nearly as possible care equivalent to parental care." He didn't say the juvenile court was to put kids in jail. He said that the juvenile court was to help keep kids out of jail. And we've got to ask ourselves the question, shouldn't we be giving our juvenile justice and our children a facility that does that? So what I'm suggesting is Phase One. We build this building. Now, it is two stories. It consists of twice as much space as the juvenile court has right now. But we don't build it all out. They need maybe 8, 9, 10,000 square feet. We put them on the first floor. We put them on half of the second floor and half of the first floor. And the rest of it is what, in my business, we call a black box. It is unoccupied space, unfinished space. The infrastructure to the building is sufficient so that when we need it, we can build it out. And you ask the question, "Judge, well, why do that?" When you build a building nowadays, you need a crane, you need bulldozers, you need all that stuff. They make a lot of noise, they move a lot of dirt, they cause a lot of inconvenience. If we do it once, and all we've got to do is get into that building's first floor and take 5,000 square feet of it and convert it into offices, we don't need bulldozers. We need a guy with a van and some sheet rock and metal stud. So the notion of how we take care of an expanding judiciary becomes not reactive, but proactive. We've got an envelope. Over time, we fill it. But we start with the juvenile court, because that's our biggest problem. And the reason why it's our biggest problem isn't simply because the building is in terrible shape. It's because the better we can care for the children that live in this community, the less we're going to have to send them up to the state court, the less we're going to have to send them up to the Superior Court. For the most part, the juvenile justice center that we currently have takes care of kids whose parents don't. Quincy, hit it again, please. All right, so then what's the next thing we do? We go around and we have, go ahead, Quincy, keep going. There's the building. We go around back and we put on the I Street a rear entrance that allowed, oh, I'm sorry, I should have told you to hold it. That's all right. It's okay. Well, hold. Hold it. Stop. Good. Back door. The back door is where we bring in children. We bring them in securely and privately. We bring in court officials securely and privately so that when they're working late hours or they're doing what they have to do to take care of the kids, it isn't in the public view. All right, now Quincy. All right. But the next step in the process, Phase Two, hold. This is actually scary. I usually do this myself. I'm not a really good director, but Quincy is good at this. The next step in the process is we come in with another building that connects the juvenile building with the existing building. Now, here again, that building represents close to 76,000 square feet. Keep in mind that your existing courthouse, that little brown square right there, that's 44,000 square feet. So we almost double the amount of space that would be available to the judiciary just by doing that building right there. We don't build it all out. We take care of our immediate needs in the space inside the shell. And we have space so that when the solicitor says, "I've got to add additional personnel," I can build into that. When the clerk of the court says, "I'm out of room in storage," I can build into that. Then, we've got a single point of entry, and it is presenting itself to the public, parking lot. The sheriff has one building he has to secure because this building's corridor aligns with the juvenile building, and it aligns with the existing building. And it's only two stories tall. Okay, go ahead. Hit it, Quincy. It's all proportionate to the site. We come around, there's juvenile, the main building. Now, hold it right there, Quincy. And what we do is we develop an inmate access point here, Sallyport. We bring the inmates in, take them upstairs, and feed them across so that they come down to the second floor for trial. We have a parking lot that's enclosed that allows for court officials at risk, superior court judges in life, to be housed, to park their cars without being seen, without being, I don't want to say anything more than that. Go ahead, Quincy. And on this side, we do the same thing. We've got that access point that they use for inmates now. We put in a Sallyport, and we put in secured parking. So we've got, okay, Quincy. What we've done by doing this is we have solved the needs of the court immediately. We've gotten a juvenile justice, juvenile services facility. We have gotten a new space for the courts to expand. And we have done it in a way where we spend as little as possible today because we're only finishing out what we absolutely need today. The next question is, okay, you're still stopping. You've still reached a point where you need a profitable fire to get rid of the courthouse and start again. No, you don't. Go on, Quincy. What you do is you have this plaza, and maybe the next step in the process, go ahead, Quincy, is there. You expand the buildings down, the Newcastle, and what is that side street called? Ellis. And down Ellis. You still have the historically significant main courthouse. You still have reused the existing courthouse. You still have the constructions, and they all fit together. And now the juvenile court, juvenile justice can expand towards the building we're in now. And the Superior and State Court and Solicitor's Court can expand down Ellis. All right. So for those who would say, we are, we, the judiciary is always painted in the corner by county commissioners that don't think far enough into the future, that would give you, in that plan, enough square footage, raw square footage, if you implemented it all, to last you the next 30 years. Keep in mind, that main, let me point with this thing. That building right there, that building right there is almost twice the size of this building right here. This building is twice what the juvenile justice group has now. So what we've done is, in step, in the first phase, is we've tripled the amount of space we've got available for the courts. And then we still have enough room to double it again. Okay, this is a really, this is a major departure from traditional responses. I have, the most I've ever been able to accomplish in the past is, I have gotten, like in Troup County, I have gotten a courthouse built, and we've got room for three additional courtrooms. It's blacked space inside the building. This is much more aggressive. And the reason why is because, and you all know this better than anybody, is you all are sitting on the most valuable real estate on the eastern seaboard. The current population projections are all over the place, but they run from about 100,000 by 2030 up to 150,000 by 2030. There are no oracles at Delphi anymore. There isn't a prophet that will tell you what the future is. All you can do, all you can do is stop worrying about what year your population hits 150,000 and start worrying about what assets you have to have in place when that window opens. This plan allows you to have those assets. In Gwinnett County, we, in 1973, we recommended they build a new courthouse. By 1980 or thereabouts, they built a new courthouse. What they did was they built it like, like a tube, like a tunnel. The administration functions were here, and the judicial functions were here. And when they got to the end, they just stopped. The idea being that they could add on. I have lived long enough to be involved now in the add-on for that building. So the investment they made in the 1980s paid off in 2022. I've also lived long enough to have been involved with the Forsyth County courthouse. God help us, it burned to the ground. They replaced it in 1975, '76. They just now replaced it again because it wasn't designed to expand. What I'm suggesting is, this approach will keep you out of painting yourself in a corner. Question is cost, okay? The PDF of Phase One? Quincy, please? Nope, not that one. That one. All right, let's talk about, whoop, go back. Okay, let's talk about costs. I told you we were going to be building a building for the juvenile justice group that is 20,000, call it 21,000 square feet. But what I'm recommending is, all we finish is 10,000 square feet. So we've got a 20,000-square-foot envelope with only 10,000 square feet of it occupied. The raw cost of the envelope is somewhere around $175 to $200 a square foot. The raw cost of the built-out portion is $350 to $400 a square foot. So what happens when you work all those numbers out and you provide 15% for furniture fixtures and equipment, and you include 200 cars parking on grade, and you pay 15% of those costs to architects and engineers to design the building for you? And you add an 18% contingency because the economy is in a little bit of trouble right now. When it all boils down, you're talking about Phase One costing you between $8 million and $10 million. And you're talking about having a building that is ready to receive 50%, actually more, 100% more than you're currently giving it on day one. That's Step One. Would you go to, the next one? The big building in the middle, same story. Let's just say, though, for the sake of conversation, that we build 76,000 square feet and occupy half of it. I don't think we need to occupy half of it, but let's just say we do. We run the same numbers, the same way. And that middle building is going to cost us between $28 million and $32 million. And it will have in it 100% more square footage than we occupy day one. Okay. Now, do me a favor and hit the video again. All right. So starting from scratch, we start with what we have today. We take a look at what we have available in the form of a football field. We take that football field, and Step One is we put together a juvenile justice building. And then Step Two is we give it signature on the street so that we can bring in folks from the back. We turn I into an access point. Step Three is we develop that building, the new building, the big building, to handle the rest of the courts. We continue with the notion of back access for security. And then, finally, that lasts us till all of us are gone, and our grandchildren can do that. And it starts off with an expensive between $8 and $10 million. And it moves forward with an expensive between $28 and $30 million. Now, I hate lawyers. My son is one. That's why I know I can hate them. And you can do all this great planning and all that kind of stuff, and everybody goes, "That's really good." But then you'll have somebody like Judge Scarlett who'll look at you and go, "Well, you know, Judge, the devil's in the details." So I had to generate plans on how that main building would work. Go to either one of those other two PDFs. Not the, yeah, there you go. Slide it down a little bit. So that, yeah, there you go. All right, this is the center building. And I just wanted to show you conceptually how it would work. And let me use this. All the inmates are brought in from the back Sallyport by way of an elevator. They're taken upstairs to the top, to the attic, I call it. And they're held there and here so that they can consult with attorneys. This space right here is the size of the Superior Court clerk's entire operation. I'm not saying you should give him that much, but you could take his entire operation and put it right there. This space here is the solicitor's offices when the solicitor goes full-time and gets two additional prosecutors. This is all administrative staff. This is the clerk of the state court. And again, we have doubled the spaces for both of those organizations. We have given the clerk of the Superior Court 100% more space, and all of this is still not used. We have a central corridor, a nice, great, big one, that connects you to the old building over here and to the new juvenile justice building over here. And the sheriff deploys all of his personnel here. The public comes in there. Go ahead, Quincy, please, to the next one. But the money is in the courts. And here's a court floor. We have the court set up the way courts should be set up with sufficient seating for a capital felony case so that we can bring in enough jurors to strike a panel for a capital felony. We've got inmate circulation by way of elevator. We've got inmate holding. We've got a judge's bench. We've got witness waiting, I'm sorry, witness testimony. We've got room for a 14-man jury box. We've got clerks of the court over here and opposing counsel. We've got judges' chambers where the judge has his own office. He has a law clerk. He has an administrative assistant, a secretary, however you want to phrase that. We have got areas over here for court reporters. We've got areas over here for court administration and conference facilities. And we end up with enough room left over on that one floor after we've given them one, two, three, four, five courtrooms, enough room left over on that floor for a jury assembly area that takes us out of the business of tracking them down at the public safety complex and bringing them over. That jury assembly area has a place for the welcome and for the education. It also has a place for the vending machines in their bathrooms and the areas where they can sort of work from home. So, yeah, the devil is in the details. And there is another detail. The first thing I did when I started this study was I asked, and Mike Stewart and Pamela helped, I asked for a steering committee. And that steering committee is made up of every constitutional officer in the judiciary, every one of them, and the juvenile court judges and the solicitor and the state court clerk. They're all my committee. They're the people I answer to. And in addition to that, I asked for, I believe it was, three county commissioners to sit on that group with me. And I did it for one reason. This is a huge project, and we don't need to have folks left out in the cold. If the board in its wisdom decides to move forward to this, with this, they need to know that that committee supports this notion. I was instructed by the committee, because I made this presentation to them, to come to you at this work session and tell you that they are 100% behind it. Not 100%. You can't ever get a lawyer to be 100% behind anything. But as close as you can, they are with me. And as testament to that, I think you can ask the county commissioners who are sitting on that committee that they are in support of it. I know that you got, you all are very busy, and I've taken a lot of your time. But if you have any questions for me, I would be happy to answer them.
Just bought a couple of lots up Ellis Street for parking.
Yes, sir.
Where are they going to park cars?
Well, go back to the video.
The flat there, the original flat.
Yeah, yeah. Hold, hold right there. My intention is that we have, we pick up 200, and if you go back, go back a little bit more, Quincy, please.
Do you want to go to Phase One?
Yeah, that's fine. You can show that. Okay, hold right there. That's perfect. What I was thinking, in my opinion, was we would pick up, and it's budgeted in that number you saw, over 200 cars here. And we should be able to pick up some 100 cars here. So court staff and public here. The parking, not the parking, the lots that you just acquired would give us the opportunity for additional parking. As we go forward, and I don't want to say this because, like I said, there's no oracles at Delphi anymore. As we go forward, I don't know what the demand for parking is going to be because I don't know what your public transport system's going to be, and I don't know whether or not we're going to be using cars. You know, you're looking at a long-term project here. And it may very well be, in my experience over the years, that the right solution is to put a parking deck right there at some point in the future. But I don't want to say it because I don't know that for a fact.
On a busy Monday, parking is a challenge right now with the little box that we've got. I mean, it's out into the football fields out here.
Well, and I don't disagree with you. The only other alternative, as far as this site is to, is here. And I don't know that you'd ever get that through the Historical Society. But you've got plenty of site. ever get that through the Historical Society, but you've got plenty of site. Any other questions? Really?
Financing options, sure. We had a point where we want to talk about options, sorry.
I'm an architect and not a very good one. Commissioner, that is above my pay grade. I know what I would do if it was mine, but it's not mine, it's yours. And I think probably Mike Stewart is more prepared to speak to those options than I am.
I mean, come forward. Did you order the pizzas? I want to know. Well, if you do, well, you can finance all of this in this manner, but I'm assuming that you probably want to proceed with Phase 1, the Juvenile Services Building. There's been some discussion, possibly putting it on splosh. I don't know if that's an option, but those, you know, that's in the realm of options. The other is use a capital fund balance. Third option would be the ACCG or similar lease purchase program that I actually managed when I was with ACCG years ago, or to do revenue bonds that would be issued through the Development Authority. And Aaron and I are still working on that possibility. So the questions come up of what revenue is going to be pledged. Well, it would be a pledging authority from the county to retire the debt on those revenue bonds. It would not be tied to any splosh. It would just be a total revenue bond issue. But we have to check with the Development Authority to see if their legislation and their enabling authority would allow that type of financing.
The revenue bonds rather than GO bonds?
Well, you could do GO bonds, but those would require a referendum.
Splosh.
Right.
I mean, but you're looking on bonding at $10, $12 million, you're looking at $700,000 a year in principal payment.
Well, yeah, you know, six months ago, you could have done it for probably 2.5%. Now you're looking at probably 3.5. I can get, I'm working on getting all those numbers for you.
If we did juvenile services with undesigned funds, with capital, then you could look at future growth with ACCG. I think the immediate need is juvenile.
I totally agree. I think it's, you know, I think it's a discussion that commissioners, we need to make a decision on as we continue to finalize, as Ms. Munson continues to finalize the budget. I think we've kind of talked about, these are the kind of decisions that need to be made.
Yeah, I, I mean, where y'all been hiding this guy?
This guy? No. Him? I don't know. I was not ready to start crying when he was up there a few minutes ago. It's like, what?
Don't even go start crying.
But, but yeah, I, you know, I agree with what is being said. We're doing it to make a decision about it, but juvenile justice services, I think, is the immediate. And then let's look at the other part. I think we have a way forward.
We take a lot of heat about undesigned fund balance too, so maybe that's a good place to put it.
Well, let's continue to work with Ms. Munson on the budget. Let's get some numbers and let's seriously think about, see if we can do this out of what we have as undesigned. I think it's time to start moving in that direction. Agreed.
And I think that's the tone of why we're doing this. And it's, like I said, it's not to be locking our children up, but to keep them out of jail. And I know our focus is so much on providing a building and a service that, let's not forget that. I think that's what we talk about.
Well, you've got a public safety issue down there too. I mean, it's just not if it's going to happen, it's when. It is a public safety issue that we've had forever.
All right. Anything else before we move on to the next thing? Item number 5, Ms. Thompson. Discussion of the Envision Glen zoning ordinance update review process.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. Senior Assistant County Attorney Will Worley and Planning and Zoning Manager Stephanie Leaf are in the audience and able to assist. Quincy, if you could pull up those three PDF files. So many of you, I've been here a few times this year to talk about Envision Glen, our zoning update. We are at the point where we have a draft and you have worked to figure out how to tackle the review of this draft so that it can be reviewed and back before you for your consideration before the end of the calendar year. At your, if you could go to the next slide, please, Quincy. So the planning commissions have met as a joint group once. Since the last time we talked, you wanted this to be a planning commission-led effort. You wanted public involved. You wanted stakeholders involved, but you wanted the planning commissions themselves to decide how to tackle that process. So where they are with that now is the proposed membership from the island, three commissioners and one citizen. From the mainland, three commissioners and one citizen. At their organizational meeting last Monday, Gary Neville was decided Chair, Robert Usher Vice Chair. Their proposed meeting schedule is every Monday at 4:00 PM until 6:00 PM in this room we're in now with the first meeting of May 23rd. And then if they wanted to continue past 6:00 PM, they would vote to extend that time. That's in consideration of everyone's time. Next page, please. The summary is that public comments will be allowed at the end of those meetings if time allows. The group will review specific sections of the proposed ordinance and decide on edits to the text each week. It will take five affirmative votes out of those eight people to be necessary to make any substantive edits. And then certain individuals or group, based on the topic being discussed, would be called upon to attend those meetings and give input on a specific topic. And then some of their meetings would be devoted entirely to public input. You can go back to that last slide, Quincy. Thank you. And Senior Assistant County Attorney Will Worley pointed out that because of the makeup of this group, you all would actually have to appoint them. The bylaws of the planning commission don't allow them to appoint such a review committee. So initially, we were going to bring that to you this Thursday for your consideration. And last week, Chairman O'Quinn wanted an update status from us today so that we could tell you where this review group was, so you can let us know if you want any changes to direct us to get with them to do any additional tweaking of the process before you all appoint this committee. Gary Neville was here, but I think he might have had to step out, the chairman. Okay. So Will and Stephanie and I are here to answer any questions.
Gentlemen, are y'all commenters or any comments?
Is it morning yet? Is it morning? Somebody order pizza. You know, my concern is making sure in the summary that you sent us yesterday with the list of names that were on for the four segments that you had outlined, I'm not sure that we're still, they don't have any voting rights in this. What kind of input rights do they have in there?
Correct. So Quincy, there's a file that says stakeholders, a PDF file. If you could open that also, please. Commissioner Neal, I'm going to defer that to either Will or Stephanie to come help me since they were at the organizational meeting last Monday. I was unable to attend that meeting. Commissioner Rafalski was there. I believe at this point, it would be to ask them questions, get their input and ideas, but you're correct, Commissioner Neal, to not be a voting member of that board. We are happy to take back any direction to that group that you all want us to. They have decided on their own the structure and process they want, but the stakeholder list I gave you is since the beginning of this process, this is everyone we've reached out to directly and asked them to provide feedback up to this point.
So let me ask you this. If a group or someone wants to comment on a section, it sounds like it's going to be discussed. It sounds like public comment comes at the end of the meeting, so maybe a decision's already made. Will this group allow for written comments to be submitted before they undergo discussion in a particular, particular topic?
Excuse me, Commissioners. For those who don't know, I'm Will Worley, Senior Assistant County Attorney. So the group that met last week had circulated some meeting procedures amongst themselves. And one of those is that they would accept written comments, but the way they had it structured would be that you would send those written comments to staff or Pam or, we even talked about setting up a special website, email address for them to send those. And those would be read as part of the public comment period at the end of the meeting if public comment was had at that meeting.
I've got a real problem with that process. I spoke with someone yesterday who said, you know, it's a two-hour meeting every week for the foreseeable future. If I don't have a voice, why would I, why would I give two hours of my time every week to go down there? And the way that I understood it, and what even I can clarify for me, is that if they had time, they would listen to people from the audience. That is not, that is not how I envisioned we were going to do this. The stakeholders in this group, if they don't have a seat at the table, just like we did with short-term rental, to give them voice in this re-ride, I don't see the future of this re-ride. You know, I've said this now for years. When TSW came forward with this re-ride, if the stakeholders cannot have input, it's dead on arrival as far as I'm concerned.
Well, what is, when you say input, could you please define?
They have to be able, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. But when we go through these nine sections, they have to have a seat at the table, talking about paragraph 1, Article 1, they've got to be able to talk about it and not, not hear a summary of the committee's thing and then they get to submit a written response to it. They're not going to be interested in being dictated to. I think the members that are on this committee are responsible people, but we're asking the stakeholders to come in and sit silently for two hours for weeks untold, to sit there to listen to what's going on, to decide if they agree with it or not. That is not how we did short-term rentals.
How did we do in short-term rentals?
We had roundtable discussions with the stakeholders, the people that live it and breathe it. The people that were against short-term rentals had a seat at the table. The people that were for short-term rentals had a seat at the table. And we discussed it and came to a consensus of what was good for our community. If those, if that similar type of structure is not there, then we're not going to come up with a good one.
On the short-term rentals was one topic, correct? I mean, you're looking at a bunch of topics. Is that not correct?
Well, we are, but that's why we divided it into nine categories.
So I think you had mentioned something to me about in the nine categories for each category, we're going to reach out to the stakeholders particularly interested in that category. Is that not correct?
Yes, sir, I did. And as, as we discussed, this is a planning commission-led effort. So I was showing you in this page and the next one I sent you all is everyone we've reached out to so far. We can make, we've worked with IT to have every meeting livestreamed and then available in a YouTube playlist. And we can always have the version of the draft they're working on available, you know, online for the current draft. But my understanding is that this review committee was going to direct me and staff as to who they wanted invited specifically each week to come sit at the table, even though every meeting's going to be advertised and open to the public.
What is the definition of stakeholder?
I mean, David's point is well-taken. I mean, you're talking about short-term rentals. You could define a stakeholder. You're talking about the world here.
Well, a stakeholder is everybody in this county.
Yeah. Exactly. Everybody in this county, but, including, you know, everybody in this county, but.
Well, I think that, you know, what I understood, we've tried to create here was a system that first focused in, not just on the TSW, but focused in working with the users of community development and users of the ordinance that are in and out of that office every day. And that was going to clean up the technical issues that we already, I think a lot of us agreed on, need to be in there. And then having gone down through that, then it would come back to the public for comment, but let the people that are using, that are in there, you know, using that office, using the rules every day, you know, just like me with the boat cap and you're in construction. Every day, you're using those rules to guide what you decide, how you apply, work with your clients. And that's the technical part that most people don't know about, don't understand, permits, all the stuff that goes into. And then, once we get the technical users who are interested in efficiencies in your office, you know, speedy, efficiency and correct stuff, then we bring it to the community to say, you know, you're concerned more about aesthetics. You know, that's really what it is. Bada thazids, density and impact, which is really a different discussion, which should come after our technical committees go through and clean out and really get something that's efficient in that department.
Yes, sir.
We all want, we all want the archaic sections, the redundant sections. We want to get those cleaned up. That's what we've been referring to as the low-hanging fruit. We should be able to eliminate those things, code overrides, where it was interpreted this way 15 years ago, was rewritten again five years ago and they conflicted and stuff. We all know that we want to get all that kind of stuff cleaned up and we're all in agreement on that. But, but getting, as Cap said, the technical issues, the people that use the system, that are part of the system, they know the system best. And that's what I'm trying to talk about, Bill, when we talk about their stakeholders, but also the people that want a slower growth.
Yes, sir.
They've got a seat at the table too. The ones that won't manage growth, I'm not opposed to them having a seat at the table.
Yes, sir. So the process we proposed to y'all in January with the consultants was to do just that. Version 0 was the one that staff reviewed. Then version 1, which is the one that's out in public right now, version 1 is the one that we sent out to what we call the technical stakeholders, the builders, the engineers, the architects. And they did a technical review edit and then that created version 2. And version 2 is what was made public for comment on concepts. You all received a lot of comments that just one group shouldn't be looking at the whole ordinance before everybody had a chance to look at the ordinance. And so y'all called staff and the TSW team to the table and you said, "Let's figure out a way to let everybody look at it and comment at once." And that's where we got the direction to have the planning commission create this review group that included pieces of everybody looking at it at the same time, not concurrently. So that's how we got to where we are today.
Do we have a list of the builders on the island and the builders in Brunswick and the architects and all that?
Casey, can you go to the next, Quincy? I'm sorry.
Because I only see one builder on the island.
The technical group, these are the people to date that we've asked. That doesn't mean we can't include anybody, include everybody. I know Kelly is building on the island, Tommy's building on the island, Jeffrey builds on the island.
Have you heard from all of them?
No, sir. Clint builds on the island, Vasa does. No, sir. Now, that being said, if you remember in the original timeframe we gave you, I was going to send the version 1 to all of these stakeholders and ask them to reply to us within 60 days by that June, I think it was the first week of June deadline. And then we changed course to have the planning commission create the review group. And so then we were getting ready to, I say we, Attorney Will Worley was getting ready to bring you the document to codify this group that the planning commission has potentially created. We were going to do that Thursday evening of this week. But if y'all either want to shift course again or have us give some new direction to those groups as to what the process you'd like to see is, please just... please just tell us.
I'm kind of the opinion, you know, we gave it to them to decide, they've come up with a plan. I think the only thing that I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, is we should ask them, as part of moving forward, is to ensure that public comments are heard before the meeting, that those comments and anything that's written before they address a subject is heard and read into the record, in my opinion. And that they should make, we should make a concerted effort to be sure that they are engaging with folks that use the ordinance on a daily basis. I think that, you know, if it's going to go forward, and if we're going to make these changes, and I think, as Commissioner Neal said, we want to be, I think we're all in agreement, there's a lot that needs to be cleaned up and worked on. The process is going to be important. And I appreciate what the planning commissions have done, but in my opinion, I think the comments need to come before they tackle a subject. And they need to reach out to technical stakeholders to ensure that they get their feedback.
And before I can vote to approve the committees, we're going to have to have an outline. You know, I don't want to approve the committee and then say, "Well, y'all passed on it." Now, the process goes forward without the people being able to be heard. And it's important to remember that the professionals, the technicians in this stuff are working every day in a booming economy. So, they don't have time to dedicate to it as much as someone that's retired, that has nothing else really to do than to dedicate themselves to it and inundate a committee with their questions so that other questions can't be heard. It's got to be balanced, if it's going to be fair. And in my opinion, ultimately passed, it's got to be a fair process that we go through this to... And there's going to have to be give and take on both sides.
Yes, sir. If it's the pleasure of the board, we were, the group did want to meet next Monday at 4:00 PM. We could still advertise and hold that meeting. Candidly, I would tell them what happened here, but then show them this piece of this video so they can see your comments and concerns. And ask them if they could address that so that we could create a new bullet point list of what that proposal is to bring to your, either your June 2nd board meeting, or your June work session.
Let me ask you this, Commissioner Neal. If we went ahead and approved the committee, but with the charge that they cannot begin review until they have submitted a process that we agree on, so that they could work on the process on the 23rd, and we could have that process reviewed on the first week of June, would that be, is that something you could work with?
It is. I'm still concerned that we've got an eight-member committee. You've got four and four possibilities. I don't know if we need an odd number, or, you know, that's something that I think maybe they should consider. I'm not opposed to the members being approved, but before they're given direction, I think they need to give us an outline of what they're going to do before we sign off on it, as you suggest. I could go along with that.
We want a process with more detail.
I do plan to attend those meetings. I may be sitting in the back, but I'm going to be there.
Do you want to sit on the committee?
I think an eight-man voting body is a form of disaster. The worst thing you can have is a four-four vote. Oh, we'll kick the can down the road, and I just...
Is there value in having a commissioner on there, much like when we had the police advisory panel? I mean, you have one commissioner who is involved.
I'm going to go whether I vote or not. I'm going to be there. I want to watch the process.
The member needs to be a voting member.
Yeah. And I would, if you're dedicating that amount of time to go do it, I would certainly recommend that you be added as a member, and a voting member.
Do y'all have any thoughts on this? I'm sorry about here.
Well, I guess I'm trying to understand what's going on, to be honest with you. What's the first group? I guess that's the committee we're talking about, putting their place.
I think they were the start, right?
Can I go back to slide one?
They're pretty much out of it now, right? At first, the 19 group, the 2019.
Oh, okay, yes. So, the Comprehensive Steering Committee, that was a required part of a comprehensive plan update. Y'all formed that group by resolution and it sunset in October 2018, once that plan was adopted. Some of those members have contacted y'all to ask to participate in review. As a courtesy, because they were involved in the comprehensive plan, we did send them links to the version, asking for their feedback. What y'all have been using for the feedback group since January of 2019 with TSW is the Joint Planning Commissions.
I don't see what difficulty is. The mission is clear from us is that the first go-through is to have the users that are engaging in your office every day on a normal business, and work with them to create an efficiency for the system. That's easy for your office, it's easy for them as users, as customer service. You know, just bring back to a lot of discussion, I'll give them the accolades. Where did Jeff Chapman got in there and created an efficient system in the tax office? So, that's what our building development stakeholders group needs to have first. And then, we need to have the aesthetics, where you've got oak trees, or driveways, or siding and that stuff. That's the public input side for the citizens. I think, turn this group loose, to get this first part done through, come back and work with them to move it down, like a football, move it down the field.
So, Cap, if I'm hearing you right, there's nine sections. So, this group will go through each of the nine sections, come back, and so we'll have one cleaned up version of each section. And then, you're going to go back and then present it to the public to get their input on the sections. And so, what does that look like when you're asking the public then to comment on it? And how do you decide what stays in and what doesn't? Who's going to make that decision? Is that something we're going to do as a board?
Well, that might be turned over to us at that time, or continue the process. I think, like the short-term rental thing worked out good in the end, in that process. Eventually, it comes back to us. But really, this first phase is to go through there and clean up and make efficient what goes on between their office, the attorney's office, and the applicants that are going in there to work, and then coming back out to the community, after they've gone through those nine sections and come back through to the community. And talk about all the aesthetics that are in there, if you really want those in there or not, or what you want to do. I think it's two different horses.
I'm not sure if I thought it was two different horses.
I think the whole concept of what we're trying to do here is how it originated, was we were trying to make it more simple to do business in Glen County. That was the bottom line. For years and years, people have complained about it's difficult to do business in Glen County. The ordinances are too stringent, you've got too many hoops you've got to jump through. So, this was, I was thinking, it was put together before I came on the commission, but it's been in the works, and now we're a part of it. But to make it less complicated, to make it more user-friendly, you know, to get rid of ordinances that we didn't need. Less is what I was thinking this whole concept was about. But it sounds like it's getting more and more and more complicated. We need to streamline it, not add to it. If we're going to be successful with this, that's the thought process I think we need to be thinking about. Not make it harder, make it easier. And it seems like you were going in the wrong direction right now already. We're back and forth on this, and I don't want it to come back to us to vote on, and it's going to be more complicated and more stringent than it is now.
Well, I think the version you have before us, TSW, is pretty complicated.
It is.
And I think that, in my view, is the purpose of what we're doing now is to uncomplicate that version, because...
You would hope.
Well, take out what we know is quote "low-flying fruit", and streamline the ordinances such that they're user-friendly, so that everybody knows what the ordinance is saying. Whether you're a builder, or you're just a regular person living in the county, you can go and look at the ordinance and say, "That's what is supposed to happen in that situation on that particular lot." The setback here is 15 feet, or whatever the setback is, you know? It should be user-friendly, and anyone should be able to look at it and see what the rules are. I think, what I've heard in three and a half years, certainly part of the reason why it's so hard to do business in that county is because the ordinance are so piecemeal together that it's hard to put things together from a builder's standpoint and from a person who lives in a neighborhood to say, you know, "What's supposed to be going on in my neighborhood in regards to building?" It shouldn't be that hard to say. If a builder builds a house, it's easy to say, "Look, this is the rules. 15 feet are the setbacks, this is where I have to put the air conditioner." There shouldn't be any discussion about it. Everyone should be able to look at it and see that. And I don't think what we currently have does that, in my opinion.
I think it does, but I don't think everybody follows the rules. And I think families can tell you that. Everybody doesn't follow the rules. They'll push that lot line right to the edge of it. I mean, my time on the board of appeals, I've seen it that way. Well, it depends too on what the zoning gives, PD texts can change the setbacks, the, you know, regular subdivision text. One thing you said in this is that architectural review, that's what homeowner association does. I don't think we have any business telling people what kind of siding they can use, what kind of, you know, what the pitch of the roof needs to be. That part, I'm just, you know, I'm totally...
Well, I mean, I don't necessarily have a problem. I mean, I understand where you come from, I don't necessarily have a problem with that because I don't know where we got into it in this particular TSW version. I know that may have came out of some surveys or whatever, but I don't think that's where we need to go. I've told all of you guys, I think, number one is drainage. Wherever you are in this county, and I challenge you guys, how many times do we get called out on situations of, "I got a drainage issue in my neighbor's yard, and now it's running into my yard." Why is that?
Like the island, right now, the one we're dealing with over there.
Yeah. I mean, and then, you run into variances like the one on East Beach, where all of a sudden, someone is taking every opportunity to build a house and get variance to build it as big as they could on that lot, and now the water goes everywhere. You know, that's not fair.
No, it's not.
I mean, when you're, we don't have that luxury on St. Simon's anymore with the density to just build something and have the water just go off to the sides.
Find it on what?
The biggest problem is water won't run uphill, and that's a fact. And we live in a flat place, that's a fact. I just think, you know, I think the success of the Short-Term Rental Committee was that that little old lady next door had the same power as Pat Hoppin'. And she had the same input as Mrs. New. And I think that's got to work here. And I totally agree with what you're saying, and David, I mean, but you know where all this stuff came from? We're here trying to shoot the messenger. It came from people that showed up, that wrote stuff on a dead gum whiteboard out there. And that's where this TSW got this stuff from, the people that came to the meeting.
But the people that came, no representative of all sections of Glen County.
Exactly.
And, you know, again, it gets down to, there's some people that have the time to come to these things, and there's others that are working. And it's got to be a fair balance.
And Commissioners, so to segue to some of your conversation you've been having today, and I think it's very good conversation because it helps inform us and inform the review committee as they move forward. There's been talk about, there are certain sections in this draft ordinance, which is almost 200 pages. It's not easy reading, that regardless of where it came from, it's not the intent of the majority of the board to have had regulations go that far. So, in talking with some of you before the presentation today, I was asked to give y'all three sections that y'all have been hearing about the most, and ask y'all if y'all want to just take those out of the draft now, and not have the review group spend time on it, or if you want to just pass it along as is to the group. So, do y'all want to do that, or ask these questions, or no?
I think we need to let the planning commissions continue the process.
Okay.
I think for us to step in overriding right now is going to distort their cohesion and their process, or take away their unwillingness to be engaged in a major work. This is not simple work.
Commissioner, was the proposed elimination of the Board of Appeals that I think from everybody we've heard, we want to keep that group and their function intact. So, that can be something that I just pass along to the committee as they're reviewing, that that's what I've heard from y'all that have had input on that. And that the FA minimum lot size will more than likely not stay at the proposed 10 acres for discussion.
That doesn't make any sense.
So...
Well, we've got these wheels in motion right now. We need to go ahead and stay with the process. But, you know, how I vote on it, it's going to be dependent on the outcome of it, of what the findings are. And if I don't agree with the findings, and it's more complicated than what it started out to be, then I will be voting against it.
Well, I think you're right. The process is important so that we can get to where we need to get to. And that's what we're discussing.
Let's let all the players play.
The devil's in the details, right?
That's correct.
We can all agree on, we want to see things cleaned up. But now we're having to get into the details, and it's not always easy.
All of this is open communication. The meetings are televised. Anybody can go and sit in the meetings. They can hear the process. All of us, you know, will get plenty of emails and calls about concerns they hear. But let the committee move forward and work through it. Because it all comes through them before it gets to us anyway.
What committee are we talking about?
The zoning, Quincy, can you go back to slides?
That's right here. Those were previous history. This is the current right here.
So, basically, the planning commissions got together and took a subgroup of some of their planning commissioners, and then added one citizen for each mainland, you know, from the mainland and the island planning commission.
I still say they need nine.
And we will get to vote on it, if we like that order.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
So, Commissioners, you know, one of the reasons we wanted to bring this to y'all is kind of get a consensus of the board, how, you know, what feedback we wanted to get back from y'all, maybe take back to this group. So, if I can summarize what I'm hearing, just to make sure, is that it seems like y'all are okay with moving this group forward with the addition...
I'm not.
Okay. Commissioner Neal, to your comments about an outline, were you envisioning maybe like sort of a schedule so that people would know sort of a while in advance what topics they were going to discuss at these meetings? Because I think what they had planned to do...
We've done that, right? We've got the nine...
So, what this board at their last, or this group at their meeting on Monday proposed was that every Monday, they would decide what they were going to talk about the next Monday. So, you would have a week's notice from week to week as to what sections they were going to take up the next meeting and go over, line by line.
I didn't get it any...
Commissioner Neal, I had proposed to you in the initial, let the planning lead take control. We thought, not take control, take the lead in the review. We had thought it might be easy to tackle it by topic. They decided as a group, they wanted to tackle it by article. Like, Article two is definitions, Article three is design standards. So, they decided that they want to tackle it by article versus topic.
I think, bring to us on Thursday the opportunity to vote on this group with the edict that their first meeting is to lay out concisely their schedule of when they anticipate whatever articles they're going to do on such and such state. Let that be there, and also their process on how they will engage stakeholders as they go through these articles.
Hand-to-hand, the ninth member from the Board of Commissioners.
Right. And I'd like to hear, Commissioner Bruckler, what is your...
And I'd like to hear, Commissioner Brooks, what is your concern at this point in this juncture?
I think it should represent other elements of the community. I mean, I know these, some of these folk here, I'm not sure about the community representatives, but I think it's leaving out points of view. And while we're going to have this open to the community, but this is the committee ultimately, and that's where the power and influence is, to have the final decision on stuff.
Decision in the final committee.
We'll have...
No, I understand that, but I guess I was thinking something different about this process when we, since we started it, and certainly you can't have just an eight-member committee. That's just not going to work.
I agree on that.
That's just not going to work.
So commissioners, I do think, and this may change if we go forward the way you are proposing on Thursday night, I think they were proposing that the draft that they create with this committee would be the draft in that goes to the planning commissions and the board of commissioners for consideration at the end of this process. So if that's not what y'all want, y'all want them to just add suggestions, and they're more an advisory board, we can, you know, tell them that that's sort of what the consensus of the board is.
Yes, I'm agreeing with that.
Say that again.
So this committee proposed in their sort of plan was that they would have these series of meetings every week, they would go through the ordinance, suggest edits, the resulting draft of the ordinance after all those meetings would be the versions that would then go to the two planning commissions for recommendation for final approval by the board of commissioners. It sounds like some...
Y'all saying that's not what you...
What's wrong with that? I think that's pretty good.
I think that's a process by which to follow.
I do.
I think that could be work.
So I, just to reiterate, you'll come to us Thursday with a proposal to form this group for, with discussion, that Commissioner Rafalski may be the ninth person or for consideration. That their meeting on the 23rd is to outline specifically a schedule and to refine their process on how they will receive comments from the public as well as from stakeholders. If that's okay with everybody, and then we'll vote.
Or the ninth person can be somebody from the board of appeals.
No, I think the board of commissioners need to seat at that table.
I think if Allen wants to do it, it's every Monday Allen for, God knows how long.
Seventeen weeks.
No, I didn't, I'm not signing up for that. So Walter, you're willing to do that?
Yeah, I'm going anyway.
So, well, let's make it official that Walter will be that.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with making...
Yeah, no, I know that, but I'm saying it's part of Thursday, Thursday night.
I'm good with that.
All right.
I don't know whether I do or not.
Well, we appreciate that. Thank you.
The planning commissioners consider...
With that, Pam, for you and Will, Stephanie, does that give the next sense of direction?
Yes, sir. I'll tell you what I will aim for, I'm going to leave Will to handle the added agenda item for Thursday night. As a goal of that meeting on May 23rd would be to have what they consider their proposed scheduled timeline and details of how they're going to review it. I'm going to send that to y'all and ask y'all for your feedback because they're going to meet again on Tuesday, May 31st, and that would give us time before your June 2nd meeting if you want them to consider other things for us to meet and refine that list to get to you for final approval on June 2nd.
Well, let's take the first step, which is Thursday night and then May 23rd, and we'll look at it. That's all we're going to commit to at this time.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else anybody wants to talk about or...
Talked out. All right. Thank y'all. Y'all have a good evening. Meetings are...
We don't have executives.
No, Aaron's going to do it Thursday.